Have the time having reached, um, I'm going to welcome everyone to the special meeting of the town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for Thursday, September 5th. Reminder that this call is being recorded. It will be available on for replay in the town's website in a few days. I'm going to start with attendance, Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Kasumi Humphreys.
Yeah.
My name's Tom Lucy. Obviously, I am here. Uh, with that, I'm going to ask uh, our clerk to read, um, the call of the meeting. Do you have that, Joe?
I do not have that. I am unprepared. I don't, I didn't think I had to read anything tonight.
It's only the agenda. Not a legal notice.
Oh, okay. So we don't have to do that?
No.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Yep. So with that, uh, there's only a couple, uh, items on the agenda for tonight. The first one being, um, case twenty-four-ten, the residents at Nahant LLC. Mr. Panos, there you are. Okay.
How are we on?
Yep.
Yeah. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the, uh, zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jason Panos for the record. Practicing law at two forty-sixty Andover Street, Pupity, Massachusetts. Uh, last week, there were three submissions that came into the board. Um, one from SV Design primarily associated with the lighting explanations and changes you asked for uh, at the August, um, hearing, and then another submission from Vanessa Associates, uh, basically in response to the TAC memo that was issued by, uh, VHB. Uh, that's dated August thirtieth, and then there was a third submission, uh, not necessarily in this order, uh, from the Moore and Cameron Group, uh, addressing, uh, some of the issues from, uh, Bill Renault's latest, uh, memorandum to the board. So all of our subject, actually, that's not entirely true. All of our subject matter, uh, experts who drafted these, um, responses uh, are here or are prepared to be here. Mr. Cameron is juggling a few, uh, hearings, so uh, if it pleases the board, uh, I would ask that his piece go last to give him enough time to get out of what he's doing and, uh, and join us. Uh, I know you have on your agenda traffic engineering memo and lighting, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think with that, we, we will start with traffic, uh, the board members you find with that. Yeah. And what I, the way I'd like to proceed, um, accepting input from the board is like, we have Lieutenant Anderson here. I also believe we have our, um, yeah, Matt Keely's here as well. So maybe we can start with Lieutenant Anderson and Matt going over the traffic advisory memo. Um, and then at that point, uh, I see Mr. Thornton here as well. If the applicant would want to respond, then it can be a little bit of back and forth on that. So with that, first of all, Matt and Lieutenant Anderson, thank you so much for attending tonight. I know it's a little bit different for you guys to be here. We usually just take the memos, but you know, this is a special, we, we have a couple of special cases here, so very much appreciate the time and effort you put into coming here tonight, as well as the all the meetings you've had, the traffic advisory and the, uh, the very thorough memo that you put together. So, uh, thank you for your efforts there.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. If, if I could just, I, I'll defer to Lieutenant Anderson, but uh, the latest submission from Vanessa Associates is pretty comprehensive and has the whole history of, um, all our comments in there. I'm not sure if it would be make, make more sense for them to go through the progression of that, or if you'd want, um, one of us to, to go through each comment.
Why don't you walk through? Why don't you walk through your memo? It's pretty comprehensive. I've allowed you to share these screens, so if you guys want to pull it up, you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, members of the board. Do you think it would be helpful to, uh, go over kind of a, a timeline of our involvement first, and then I'll have Matt?
However you want to present that, Lieutenant Anderson, I'm open to.
Okay, that sounds good. So, uh, around October tenth, I received a comprehensive permit application for the residences at Nahant, uh, their forty B application. Uh, we had, I requested a copy of the site plan, traffic impact assessment and parking plans, uh, from Attorney Panos, and he put me in touch with, uh, somebody from Hayes Engineering who provided an electronic copy, uh, I CC'd a town engineer, and, uh, I gave my availability for a Zoom meeting to, uh, discuss traffic scoping. Uh, nobody responded to that email, uh, around October tenth, twenty-twenty-three. On November third, twenty-twenty-three, uh, since I hadn't received any reply for an informal scoping meeting, uh, which sometimes we do to kind of, uh, kind of talk out, uh, what the TAC generally looks for in these applications, uh, in terms of the traffic impact assessment. Uh, I reached out again and, uh, I sent Attorney Panos and the engineer from, uh, Hayes Engineering, and I offered them space on our December first, twenty-twenty-three meeting to discuss, uh, the scope of their traffic study. On November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, Mr. Cappacetti, I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, from Hayes, uh, replied and indicated they would like to be included in the agenda for discussion about, uh, the traffic study scope. He CC'd Scott Thornton, the project's, uh, transportation engineer as well. December first, we held a TAC meeting, uh, we are on the agenda. We discussed traffic scoping for zero-one-nineteen, one-twenty-seven, or one-thirty-five Nahant Street. Uh, at that meeting, uh, it was discussed, uh, of this, the study for a hundred unit, forty B multifamily bottom building was discussed, known as residences at Nahant LLC. Uh, Scott Thornton was present, uh, from Vanessa Associates and gave a presentation on the proposed project location. Uh, was presented to have one driveway on the east side of the site with approximately a hundred and thirty-five surface and below building parking spaces. It was proposed to be a four-story apartment building, hundred-unit building with a mix of one and two bedroom units. We had conversation about the traffic study, uh, we noted a need to include the school dismissal hours, uh, uh, a need for parking to meet or exceed the bylaw due to the project's location, and a need for delivery and vehicle parking. So this was during the traffic scoping meeting. Uh, I explained some of the challenges that a hundred.
Join the meeting.
Would, uh, would have, including, uh, no rail on-street available parking, um, in this area, and a need for dedicated, uh, spaces for things like delivery vehicles. Um, I was noted as saying, uh, when Nahant Street being a curving road and a cut through, uh, is already a concern amongst the, uh, residents there and residents of the area of speeding vehicles, vehicles using the hot street as, uh, as a cut through and truck traffic. Um, I included an email from, uh, some residents in the hot street, and that was included in the meeting material. Um, I repeated, uh, need to include additional times of the study along with other projects that were also being proposed in the area at that time. Uh, Fire Chief Sullivan added his concern about the size of the project and the project, uh, other projects being proposed at that time. Uh, he was concerned about Traverse Street becoming another cut through because of the increased use in the hot street. Uh, he discussed with Mr. Thornton some of the, uh, concerns over, uh, the grade of the driveway for his apparatus and things of that nature. We had public comment from, uh, Maureen Melting of Nahant Street. She can, uh, she had a concern about the proposed project and the traffic, uh, change to increase travel on side streets. Uh, and there was some conversation from Council McLean about, uh, how much fill would be required to bring that up to grade based on what they presented. On February ninth, twenty-twenty-four, Town Engineer Bill Renault and I received an email from Scott Thornton. He indicated they'd be filing the traffic study next week, and they'd like to be on our next agenda. Our next meeting was, uh, the sixteenth of that month, so that wouldn't be enough time to, uh, receive and digest the study. But nevertheless, we didn't receive a study, uh, during that time period. Uh, February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, received an email from Scott Thornton, uh, indicating the traffic study should be wrapping up shortly, and he hopes to have it to me within a couple of days. His hope was to get it on the next agenda, which at earliest, I indicated would be mid-March. February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, received a follow-up email from Scott Thornton. Inquired about a date for the next meeting again, but still no traffic study had been submitted to me. March sixth, twenty-twenty-four, traffic impact assessment was received via email from Attorney Panos. April fifth, twenty-twenty-four, we had a meeting, and on that meeting, that included, uh, thirty-two Nahant Street as well as, uh, the residences. May tenth, we had another meeting, uh, that was both thirty-two Nahant Street and the residences. June fourteenth, we had a third meeting, uh, technically a fourth, if you include the traffic scoping meeting for both thirty-two Nahant and the residences. And then July twenty-sixth, we held a special meeting for the residences, uh, on Nahant Street. Uh, that brings us up to our, uh, memo that was submitted, um, to you by Matt Keely. Uh, I'll turn it over to Matt, so he can go over some of the, uh, the more technical comments there. Uh, but I will say that, you know, throughout this process, and, you know, Mr. Chair, you've been involved in the process, um, we have, as uh, a a committee held that, that we have some serious safety concerns about this, uh, proposed development, and that has been consistent among members of the TAC. Uh, it's been echoed clearly by, uh, the residences, the residents of, uh, Nahant Street and, uh, and various other neighborhoods that are button Nahant Street. Uh, we've had the largest turnout, I think, uh, for this, uh, proposed development, uh, that I can remember for, uh, any agenda item on the history of the TAC since, uh, I've been here. Uh, and a lot of it had to do with the concern of how a project of this size and scope would impact, uh, the safety of motorists and pedestrians. And if you look at our mission statement, um, as a committee, uh, we, we've been a committee for now over two decades in town. Uh, that is, our mission is to try to improve upon the conditions for, uh, motorists and pedestrians and those who, uh, roll through town through various other means. So, uh, that has been a, uh, a firm held position of TAC. Uh, we've had concerns about, uh, things like sightline visibility where, you know, the existing driveway as it, uh, as it stands right now, uh, not being developed, doesn't have some of those concerns. Uh, but with the proposed, um, development and, uh, moving those driveways to accommodate, uh, the site, um, it would limit the, uh, the ability, in my opinion, and, uh, Matt can, uh, handle this from a, an engineering perspective. It would impact the ability to, uh, have vehicles in a lot of scenarios, um, especially at speeds that are around thirty-plus miles an hour, which we see in the traffic impact assessment, uh, to be able to stop safely. And, uh, you know, we've had a lot of serious crashes on the hot street, uh, ones that I've personally responded to. Uh, we've had, uh, our residents tell us about, uh, the impact that those crashes have had, uh, on them and their safety and uh, their ability to walk, uh, safely around that neighborhood, uh, losing power, uh, down telephone poles, uh, guardrails that are in constant disrepair because of crashes. Uh, so where the with the crash, uh, statistics may not exceed the, the quote-unquote, uh, mass DOT, uh, state average, I would, uh, I would say to you that, um, the severity of crashes, uh, does cause for a lot of concern, and, uh, their own traffic impact assessment shows that there are quite a few vehicles, uh, traveling, especially, uh, off peak hours, that are well over the posted speed limit. And, uh, no changing of a speed limit is going to reduce, um, boats, uh, those speeders. No amount of traffic enforcement, uh, is going to consistently, uh, provide for slower speeds. It's just, it's a cut through. It's the nature of the, uh, the area and where the street is located. Uh, it's located between two major, uh, roadways in town, so it's, it's used as a cut through. And, uh, to add this type of development to it, I think, um, in its existing form would be, uh, would be creating an even unsafer condition for, uh, the residences there. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Matt, so he can hit on some of the other comments, but, uh, but that has been our, uh, opposition throughout all of these meetings. And, uh, we haven't seen any real major alterations to the site plan to, to change the, the entrance to, uh, an entrance that's more closely located to where it is now. Uh, it doesn't have these, uh, sightline issues, uh, or has better sightline visibility. Uh, we haven't seen that. We haven't seen a different site plan that has maybe a driveway in the front, uh, that would accommodate fire apparatus or vehicles turning around or delivery vehicles, or, you know, a number of concerns that we've brought up, that, uh, you know, there, there's been no other option besides this, uh, this one site plan with some minor modifications. So, uh, that's something that would be, uh, something we could consider in traffic advisory and kind of vet that out, but we, we haven't seen it in any of those meetings that I've, uh, presented to you. Uh, so Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Um, so there has been a lot, um, of back and forth. Several memos have gone back and forth. I don't want to read this whole ten-page document, but it would kind of whittle it down to seven comments. What I thought I could do is talk about the origin of the comments, and then, uh, VAI can, um, you know, read their latest responses, uh, to, you know, sort of the progression of how things have gone. So comment one was, you know, sort of originated as a general, uh, comment about parking and the lack there, you know, there's a little bit short on parking in our opinion, and how delivery vehicles and visitor parking, Ubers, Lifts, Uber Eats, that type of stuff would be accommodated on the site. As part of the sort of evolution of the site plan, they, uh, have updated the site plan to have some dedicated parking, short-term spaces um, adjacent to the building to accommodate deliveries and, and, and things like that. Um, we still have some minor concerns that, um, you know, an Uber Eats driver might just pull into the one-way driveway on the west side, make their delivery and then back out onto Nahant or reverse directions and go out the entrance. That's obviously human nature. It could happen. It's something that we remain concerned about. We obviously can't, you know, enforce every single regulation, um, but just wanted to acknowledge the possibility of that and that it is still, uh, somewhat of a concern for us um, in that area of the building. Comment two, um, was again related to parking, um, in an earlier version of the site plan. There was no dedication of parking for the, the garage spaces. So one of the things we had a concern about was cars coming into the site, looking for a parking space, and having to back out of the garage because there's no good place to turn around into the garage. Um, and the same sort of thing happens, um, on the southwest portion of the site where you come in the east driveway, you have to circulate around the building counterclockwise, and then you're faced with a do not enter sign because that's where the one-way section comes in from the west driveway. Um, they have since made some updates to the plan and, and clarified that there should be some dedic, the garage spaces would be dedicated, so we wouldn't just have a lot of people coming into the garage and, and having to back out because they can't find a space. Those will be designated for certain units as well as the tandem parking that they have, uh, proposed on the west side. So generally speaking, you know, those, those concerns have been addressed, but overall, the circulation on site is not ideal. You don't want to circulate through the site and then get faced with a do not enter sign and have to do a three-point turn and reverse to look for another parking space. So not a critical thing, but, um, just not ideal to have, uh, that kind of circulation on the site. Comment three was related to, um, site distance conflicts with the landscaping design. This came out of an earlier version of the site plan and, uh, an architectural rendering that showed some of the landscaping in three D. It showed, um, a shrub and a fence that would have obscured, uh, sightlines from, uh, the egress. That was clarified that that fence was not supposed to go that far, and there was not going to be a shrub planted right in that location, so um, that particular conflict was resolved on that plan, but site distance remains one of our biggest concerns, probably my biggest concern, um, for that driveway. Um, we've been talking about this at every meeting, um, so we have a hundred units. They have one point of egress. And my biggest concern is the intersection site distance. That's where the driver that's leaving the site and looking up and down Nahant Street. Um, right now, they are showing that if you're pulling out of Nahant Street and you're looking to the east, you have a hundred and eighty-five feet of intersection site distance. That's only adequate to, um, prevent an accident with a vehicle that's traveling twenty-eight miles an hour or less on Nahant Street. If a vehicle is traveling more than twenty-eight miles an hour, there, there might be a collision. And I think, you know, from their speed study, there are plenty of data points that are well above twenty-eight miles an hour. Um, I should acknowledge that our typical industry standard is to accommodate the eighty-fifth percentile speed on the roadway, which is, I believe, twenty-six miles an hour in the westbound direction. However, I, I, I still feel very uncomfortable that if a vehicle is traveling over twenty-eight miles an hour, it may cause a crash with somebody exiting the driveway. I think that's going to be a common occurrence, um, and is not a, a safe condition for, for day one of when you're opening a hundred-unit development. Um, I still remain very uncomfortable about that. I'm sure we'll talk more about that after I go through the other comments, but I just want to get the, the, the main points out there. Comment four was related to the perfect fit parking application. Again, we've, we've just had a lot of back and forth about how many spaces are provided on the site and whether or not it's accurate. Uh, the applicant has, uh, presented a lot of data in a, it's from a study that's called the Perfect Fit Parking Application. It was done by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And it's, it's a survey of parking for, you know, uh, I'm not even sure what the number is, but maybe hundreds of sites, hundreds of residential sites, um, in eastern Massachusetts. And it, it documents their parking, parking supplies and parking demands. Um, and they presented the ratios that are, uh, typical for, um, you know, suburban apartment buildings, and they're showing that their parking supply should be adequate for the demand. We've consistently made just the point that it's, it's still well below zoning. We know that zoning requirements don't necessarily apply here, but we thought it was worth noting, uh, because zoning requirements have, have a fundamental basis to them, so we didn't want to ignore that just because this is a forty B. Um, just wanted to point out that it's, it's short of that. And we do acknowledge that, um, that study, the perfect, perfect parking study has a lot of good data in it. Uh, however, it does not cover you in case, you know, somebody has a party, or, you know, there's, you know, excessive visitors. It's, it's it's just something we have a little bit of discomfort with because if there's no parking spaces on site, that's going to spill over into the neighborhood. So again, um, you know, just a point of disagreement there, but, uh, we can talk more, more about that later. Um, comment five, um, I think comment five was, uh, a comment at a previous TAC meeting, um, related to posting no parking signs within the neighborhood to prevent the impacts to the neighbors. I think this is generally a misunderstanding because we would never, uh, require anyone to put a no parking sign within the neighborhood and take spaces away from the neighborhood. So I think we can just move on from that one. Comment six again was going back to circulation. There was, um, bear with me for a second. I'm just reading the, the progression of this one. Yes, we, we talked about different vehicles being able to circulate through the site, including, um, the fire apparatus. And, uh, VAI has presented, um, turning diagrams that show that all the different types of vehicles can circulate throughout the site. Um, we acknowledge that it's physically possible for those vehicles to, uh, circulate through the site, but we should also note that the, the fire chief was a little bit uncomfortable about the maneuverability of it and the fact that original vehicles might still end up parking on the hot street to respond to calls. Um, comment seven was a concern over, uh, the, the existing Nahant Street crosswalk and Traverse Street, and they, uh, have proposed a, uh, rectangular, rectangular rapid flashing beacon, uh, which we think is an enhancement to the existing crosswalk. Um, sorry, I didn't want to go on too long in each of those comments without hearing some other discussion, but we have, you know, other points that we need to make. Um, but, uh, just wanted to at least get the, the main comments out there for discussion.
Board members, any questions? For Lieutenant Anderson or Mr. Keely?
Mike Feely here. Um, quick question. Those meetings that were held in the summer, when you say there were TAC meetings, was there anybody from the developer there? Including the attorney or, or was VHB at those meetings?
Yes.
They were. Was the attorney there?
Yes. Anybody else?
Yeah, Lieutenant Anderson, Chip Tarbell here. You made a comment that I just was hoping for some clarification. Um, when you said earlier, I mean, we've like you said, you've, you've been on the committee for a long time and we've had other forty Bs. Um, you've never, did you state that you've never had as many concerns about a project as you have had on this one? I don't want to misquote. I, you kind of made a general comment at the beginning, and I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
No, I appreciate that. In my experience, I've never had the, the overwhelming turnout, uh, of public participation, and the overwhelming turnout was also consistently in opposition of, uh, the development for a number of issues, most notably safety.
And when we had projects up on Hopkins or downtown, uh, did you have the same concerns? Or if you did, how were they handled differently than this project's been handled?
I wasn't involved in the, uh, the development of, uh, the Hopkins Street, uh, projects, however, several other ones, and, uh, I think they were handled differently in a lot of different ways. I think, uh, the developers made major adjustments in some of them, which eliminated or mitigated some of our concerns that had to do with either, uh, uh, locations of, uh, driveways, onsite circulation might have been adjusted to improve the flow or to limit the impact to, uh, neighboring streets, um. The size and scope was adjusted to, uh, to meet or exceed our parking bylaw, which, uh, may have reduced our concerns about uh, parking spillover and congesting, uh, smaller residential streets. Uh, the flow of the, uh, of the site may have been adjusted in some situations to, uh, to kind of, uh, just have a better circulation to help eliminate conflicts that just aren't desirable. Like, like Matt Keely said, you know, for for day one of this project, there's already a, a lot of concerns that, you know, yeah, maybe technically on paper, it, it, it just sneaks by, but is that really good for day one? Is that good for our neighborhood? Is that good for our residents? You know, fire trucks can technically belly-squeeze by each other, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not good. It's just a not, not a good layout. And in, in my experience with some other forty B, uh, proposals, they've made those adjustments. They've, uh, they've eliminated or mitigated a lot of our concerns. One that I can think about, uh, uh, in particular is right behind the police station, uh, Crescent Commons, which, uh, I'm sure you're familiar with, and, uh, there were a lot of adjustments made, and we had a lot of concerns. Uh, some similar concerns and some that were unique to, uh, to that neighborhood, but, uh, the development team, uh, did a lot of work to change the, the site plan, and, uh, that I haven't seen yet.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that clarification.
Anyone else on the board?
No, Mr. Chair. Appreciate Lieutenant Anderson and Matt Keely's, uh, summary. I think they, they laid it out pretty well.
The, the only thing I would add that I, that I gleaned from attending the TAC meetings is this perfect fit parking study maintains that there's less parking at forty B projects. And that's not something I agree with. Uh, all we got to do is drive up to Hopkins Street. You mentioned Hopkins Street, Chip, and you you know, all the parking spills out, uh, onto the street out there. And, you know, so it's, to my mind, we have empirical data here in Wakefield that says that's not true. So um, anyway. With that, um,
Actually, Mr. Chair, I did, did think of something as I was
Okay, go ahead.
Checking my notes. So Lieutenant Anderson, did, with your discussion, in addition to the, the concerns, um, that you raised in the, in the, uh, during the meetings, um, one thing that also, uh, again, strikes us and strikes me is, um, you know, in the study, that this, the, the trips, the daily trips. We're talking an increase of a four-hundred-and-fifty-odd trips, right? With a hundred unit, you know, based on the study, it's in the, it's in the traffic impact assessment. Um, you're taking four-hundred-and-fifty additional trips right in a densely populated, narrow, winding, busy, cut-through street, right? So you got sightlines, and you've got, um, the other concerns you mentioned, but I wonder how much discussion or went into some of the, just the, the trip generation, even if it doesn't affect signaling on either end or whatever might go on at intersections, but just the volume of cars you know, potentially from this site with a hundred units.
So I think, uh, it, it was discussed, it was discussed maybe, uh, even more so with the thirty-two Nahant, and I know that that's your next agenda item, but, um, what types of concerns that the, uh, the intersection of the junction, which is, uh, North Avenue, Main Street and the hot street is a busy intersection. Anybody that's driven through that intersection knows that. There's a lot of traffic queuing, uh, there's a lot of turning movements in that intersection. Uh, it's a busy place. Uh, what we did discuss was The level of service of that intersection right now is a level D. Uh. You know, and uh. The uh traffic impact assessment claims that there'll be no, no change in the level of service, but. That it's, even if it doesn't change it, it's certainly not helping it, right? It's going to trend toward enough, which is uh. It's, it's a failing intersection at that point. The, the queuing times are too long. Uh, and uh the intersection essentially has failed to do its job to uh move traffic along in some type of uh. Uh, timely order. Uh, from my own experience uh in traffic enforcement and crash investigation. When people are frustrated and they're stuck in traffic and they're late. They start to take on risky driving behavior. Uh, and any increase in queuing to our intersections. Is a recipe for disaster. So we discussed it probably even more so with thirty two Nahut because of its proximity to. That level D intersection, but uh we also discussed here. Sure, maybe the trip generation uh overall, according to industry standards, quote unquote on paper, uh doesn't change that level of service. Certainly doesn't help. Um, I think it's trending toward enough that intersection. So. It's, it's a concern of mine uh from a uh enforcement perspective. And from uh, from a traffic safety perspective. And uh, I think it uh, it will increase the number of crashes we have at that intersection. You have more trips through the intersection. Uh, for cars that are traveling uh westbound. You have uh. More people that are frustrated, stuck in traffic from all ends and that uh, in my experience, twenty years as a police officer. Frustrated drivers take on uh a lot of uh risky. Risky moves that they shouldn't operate on the wrong side of the road because they want to get up to the next cut through street. Traveling too fast down residential cut through streets that. You really shouldn't be traveling those speeds, but they're already late and so on and so forth. You see it, you drive around town, you. You've seen it all, uh as have we. So uh when we can, when we can reduce that. I think we need to, when we can uh push back on uh. Things in town that don't make sense, that may exacerbate those conditions, I think we need to. And uh, in this instance, I think that's, that's one of them. The other thing, uh Mr. Halfill, I want to point out too, and you bring up a good point, the uh, the trip generation. So you say four hundred odd trips uh coming and going on that site. They, they are coming and going through uh a driveway that has. Or uh sightline uh stopping distances, right? So maybe they just technically meet uh the industry standards, right? Which uh. To me, that, that isn't cutting, especially with the other speeds from their traffic impact assessment that are. Thirty-five, forty plus miles an hour, right? Be having all these trips going through a driveway that really isn't ideal when the existing driveway um does a much better job of it. And there's been no modification to uh their site plan to try to find a way to use that existing driveway. Uh, so there's a driveway there that's much better suited uh. For a driver to see if another vehicle's coming on the hot street before they safely proceed out into the hot street. Uh, they're not using that with the site plan. So they're, they're proposing to do a different driveway because it accommodates uh. Uh, what they want to build there. And I, I understand why. But we're going to add four hundred trips to a driveway that uh is worse off than the existing driveway there. Uh, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I, I think it's also important to note that, that at the end of the T A C memo. Um, Matt, I don't know if you have that in front of you. If you want to read. You know, there's a summary at the end with a couple of sentences that says the T A C cannot support. This project going forward.
Did you want me to, to read that?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful for people to hear because I don't think all the members of the public have seen the memo.
Okay, I, let me just open it up. I just had the um response memo up, so bear with me for one second. So from the August fourteenth memo. Uh, our summary says, as stated throughout this document, the T A C continues to have serious concerns about the potential impacts. That the proposed project could have on public safety in this area. As mentioned previously, this project has been discussed at four T A C meetings. At all four meetings and throughout the comment and response documents, the primary concerns of the T A C have been expressed consistently. There are still unresolved issues related to the size of the development, parking supply, side access and circulation, site distance, emergency vehicles. Emergency vehicle, vehicle access and overall safety along the Han Street. The T A C acknowledges and appreciates some of the changes that have been made to the site plan. But the current plan remains largely unchanged as, and does not address the T A C's primary concerns for public safety. The density of the site creates constraints that are the primary driver of the safety impacts to the neighborhood. These constraints could be avoided with a different site layout. Due to the significant safety concerns of the current plan, the T A C cannot support the project in its current form.
Great, thank you. So uh, if there's no more questions from the board, uh I'm going to throw it back to, to Mr. Panos. I know his team has worked. Uh, including Mr. Thornton on a response to the T A C memo. I think it, we should give them an opportunity to respond.
Yes, uh, so through you, the chair, I'd like to uh present Scott Thornton. To go through um, not only. The response memo, but some of the comments that uh, that followed on by members of the board. So Scott, if you don't mind, take it away.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, also appreciate um, uh Lieutenant Anderson and. Mr. Keely being here tonight. Um, so we did prepare, uh, we prepared several responses. Uh, the initial traffic study, as Lieutenant Anderson indicated, was framed by uh, by the meeting. That was um held in December for, for the T A C where. Where we had some ideas about the scope, but these were modified uh to uh, to comply with. Uh, with what was requested by the T A C. Lieutenant Anderson's timeline, again, I think he did a great job in summarizing everything. Um, uh, but um, but we have. You know, I think it's important to note that throughout this process, that the T A C has provided input. Uh, to the development team, the development team has. Taken that input and modified the project uh several times uh to address. To address the comments that have been raised. Um, and. So with that, uh, I'll just. Hit some of the high points from our most recent response from August thirtieth. Um. You know, um, Matt had indicated that the, that the comment, um. The first comment had to do with the uh, delivery and visitor uh vehicle parking. Um, you know, we, we. We provided those spaces as a direct request from T A C. Um, and, and we agree that there's a, there's a benefit. Uh, and I think that the T A C did as well with the, that there was a benefit to providing those spaces, even though it's not spelled out in the um. Uh, in the, in the Wakefield zoning by law. Um, I think that um. You know, there are some concerns that, that have been raised that really are uh just a function of. Existing operations within uh, within a parking, uh, a parking lot. Um, what we've tried to do is rectify. Uh, and um, and design in some potential uh, um. Modifications to uh, to driver behavior so that people understand that. Um, that, you know, in some areas, for instance, the west driveway to the site. Um, that's an entrance only. We're going to post it down at the end, uh, the southern end of the site near the garage for. Do not enter, it'll be posted for uh, for uh, for wayfinding reasons so that uh trucks know that that's. That's the way that they should be coming to the site. Um, and uh, you know, parking spaces that are along that west driveway. Are going to be marked and appropriately signed um, to, to encourage the intended traffic flow. And, and this is, you know, the idea is to make it simpler for people to understand that this is, you know, one. In one driveway, the eastern driveway, it's full access, entrance and exit. On the other driveway, it's, it's an entrance only into the site. Um. And uh, to, you know, I think that the. You know, there's, there's a cons, there, there may always be a concern about um, drivers. Pulling into a driveway and, and backing out. Um, you know, when, when they're not supposed to. I think that. That can happen anywhere. Um, so, so, you know, we acknowledge it. But again, we don't, we don't think that that's a likely uh, a likely situation here. When, when there, there's always the potential for, for people to, to not. Follow driving, you know, typical behavior. But again, we don't think that this, that these driveways um are. Are concerning from the perspective of, of driver behavior. We're trying to address those, those issues through the design. Um, the next comment again had to do with um, with parking spaces onsite. And um, the concern that uh, some of the spaces. Um. There may be, there may be some opportunity for, or, or cause for recirculation if, if drivers come into the site. They're not able to find a parking space and they're, they wind up hunting around or have to reverse direction. So, so we made sure again to, to provide that wayfinding uh to, to direct. Motorists, residents appropriately through the site. And if some motorists come in through, through the east driveway and get to the, get to the end and. Uh, find they need to turn around to, to get a parking space. Maybe they're looking for. Uh, a space further to the, to the south and to the west. Well, and there's no space available and they have to turn around and. And go back to, to the eastern side, then they can do that. We've, we've provided as, as. Uh, Mr. Keely indicated, we've provided vehicle circulation diagrams that show that the vehicles can. Uh, reverse direction, there's sufficient space for them to do that and turn around. So, um, you know. By their nature, parking lots have an opportunity for conflict to occur with different. You know, not well-defined vehicle turning paths. And we don't think this is, again, we don't think this is going to be. Any different, but, but we think that, you know, the assignment of, of the spaces to specific units or um. Some of the spaces on the western driveway to specific units, the assignment of the garage spaces to specific units is going to. Is going to help to alleviate that potential condition. And we think normal operations can then occur. Um, there were some. I, I think the next issue had to do with the, with the site distance. Um, as Mr. Keely indicated, we, we acknowledged that there were some. Um, there were some conflicts with the, with uh, some of the, the features onsite. Which is, which have been addressed, you know, the uh fencing has been pulled back, landscaping has been. Uh, thinned out in the front of the site in order to encourage uh the site distance. Uh, and promote site distance there. You know, some of the, some of the concerns uh that have been addressed related to. Um. That have been related uh, that, that relate to the speeds and the, and the uh site distance available at the eastern drive. You know, as, as Mr. Keely indicated, we, we can't, well, we designed to. The, the eighty-fifth percentile speeds. Um, it's not. Practical to design to the hundredth percentile speeds, right? The eighty-fifth percentile. Represents the point at which eighty-five percent of the traffic is traveling at or below uh that speed. If, if we were to design for the ninety-fifth percentile or the hundredth percentile, you know. Uh, accommodating every vehicle, um, accommodating every vehicle. Traveling speed that was identified in the, in the counts that we collected. You know, uh, uh, you'd need, you'd need hundreds and, you know, po- considerably greater site distances than. Then are available. And, and that would be the case for a lot of the, of the streets. Uh, along the hot, and quite honestly, a lot of the streets in town in general. Um, and I, and I'm sure that there's, there's quite a few driveways and side streets along the Han Street. That, that don't have the uh, the requisite amount of site distance. That's available. Some of the driveways near, near Franklin and Birch and Stark where they, where there's the. The tight curvature of Nahat, um, the other end by Kathleen and Mount Pleasant where there's. You know, in some cases, there's vegetation, there's, there's fencing, you know, the, these items obstruct. Uh, the ability of motorists coming out of the driveways to, to, or the streets. Um, you know, in a much more, much greater case than the current, the current design does. Um, I think the other thing that's important to note is that on the, on the uh. Traveling eastbound on the hot street, there's a couple signs that are where the streets posted for twenty miles an hour. Um, and those are regulatory signs. Those are not, those are not warning signs. Uh, we think that since there's not much difference. In the character of the roadway in this, in this segment between uh, the, the. Eastbound travel and the westbound travel, uh, we think that, that the uh, the roadway could be. Uh, signed for twenty miles per hour in the, in the westbound direction as well. Um. If. Um, if I can, I'll just continue and wrap these, wrap these other comments up. The next. Next comment had to do with the perfect fit parking. Um. Use for the project. Um. You know, again, we think that the uh, we think that assigning the parking spaces, numbering them. Uh, so for the, for the spaces on the west driveway and for the garage will help to uh, to. Simplify the parking experience for motorists and residents. Um, there will be guidelines for guest parking and for. Um, for residents so that they understand where. Parking exists, where their spaces exist and, you know, that they need to comply with the parking policy for the site. Um, with regard to the, to the perfect fit parking. You know, there are, the, there are a number of um, of comments that have been made. Or a number of uh, points in the perfect fit parking um, that. Relate the fact that the um, the, the amount of parking that's used is directly. Uh, related to the amount of parking that's provided. So with, with less parking provided. There's, there's less parking that's needed. And this is because these, the developments where parking. Is, is constrained or not at a, a high level of, of supply per unit. That encourages, encourages a, a resident that may not have uh multiple vehicles, may only have one vehicle that's shared. Uh, between uh, between residents or could be uh, uh. A single uh, single resident. And. Looking at some of the data from some of the towns that are profiled in the perfect fit parking, towns like. You know, but I think the last, the latest study that included data from Needham, Newton, Sudbury and Waltham, which are not. Transit-heavy towns, uh, they had a parking demand rate of point nine spaces per unit. Um, which is, which is much lower than the one point three seven space per unit supply that's being proposed for this development. Um. I, so I think that the, 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 the. Perfect fed parking is, the report is still valid for use in this, in this case. Um, related to the neighborhood no parking signs, uh, I think that. You know, I, I. Our understanding was that there was an existing condition where um. There was a lot of guest parking occurring on streets in the neighborhoods, including private roadways. Um. Our approach was to, was to provide uh, or offer to provide uh no parking signs. Uh, on the streets in the neighborhood, particularly the private, the private streets, private roads, because. Our understanding was that this was an issue that was ongoing. Um, since, since we've made that uh requir- or made that proposal. It's been um, you know, the, the situation seems to have changed and, and it's, it's not really an issue. Uh, of, of parking that's occurring on the, on these streets. Um, but I think that the. You know. Um, but I think that the, you know, we, we have identified or we have, we have proposed that the applicant and the management team will identify clearly in lease agreements that residents will be allowed a, a limited number of parking spaces. And we think that the, that this will address uh the parking concerns uh for both the neighborhood and uh the T A C. With regard to the, to the site circulation, um, again, the, the, the auto turn um, the auto turn exhibits that we have provided um indicate that a number, you know, a variety of vehicles can circ- circulate through the site. Um, these include delivery vehicles, trash trucks, um, uh moving vehicles, fire trucks if needed. Uh, and of course, passenger vehicles. Um, I think it's important to note that um, the um, I think it's important to note that the, the, the fire department at the July twenty-six T A C meeting indicated that um, their preference was not to, to fight a fire from uh, from the site and they would, they would most likely, most times uh leave their apparatus on the street to fight the fire uh from that location. But that said, the site can still accommodate a fire truck circulating all the way around. Uh, there's, if there's medical emergencies, that a fire truck can be accommodated, an ambulance can be accommodated, a police cruiser can be accommodated. Um, there was some comments about potentially moving the trash room to the east driveway. We feel that the, that the, the, the trash room, which is current, currently accessed from a trash truck on the west driveway uh makes the most sense because um, um, because if it's coming in on the west driveway, it's only affecting a few of the parking spaces for the site. Whereas if it's coming in on the east driveway, it's affecting the majority of the spaces. And then um, and I don't think there was much, much disagreement about the, the crosswalk proposal um for, for the Nahad Street crosswalk at Traverse Street. Um, as far as some of the other comments go, um, you know, particularly uh with regard to the, to the additional trips. Um, so it, it is about four hundred, you know, this development would generate um four hundred fifty-four or so uh, uh total daily trips over the course of a twenty-four hour day. So that's about two hundred and, you know, two hundred twenty-seven trips in and out. Um, in the, during the, during the peak hours, which is what we look at when we're doing a traffic study. Um, because those are the critical time periods. That's the time when the high, when the, the adjacent street traffic is at its highest and the traffic generation of the development is at its highest. We're looking at about nineteen left turns out of the site in the morning from the east driveway. So that is the, that is the peak for that movement. That's a relatively small number. Um, in terms of um, in, in terms of the actual impacts of the project.
Thank you, froze, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Thornton, you froze for a couple minutes, a minute there. So if you can just roll back a little bit. Can you hear me now? Let me, maybe I'll shut my video off. Yeah, did, did I, did I get through the um, through the Nahad Street crosswalk?
The last thing we heard about was the uh nineteen trips in peak hour morning.
Okay, okay, yeah. So um, thank you and I apologize. So with the nineteen um,
It's boring. This guy is boring. Yeah, cuz he's not on our side, but the rest of it.
Mr. Solis, you need to mute. So, okay, Scott, sorry about that.
No, that's fine. So uh, so I'll just sum up quickly. Um, uh, so the peak movement uh out of the site, that, that left turn movement is nineteen vehicles uh during the peak hour and should be less throughout the rest of the day. In terms of um, the, the traffic study itself, which no one has, has really disputed the results of, um, it's about, you know, what the percentage increases are between point one and two percent. Um, at, at the, you know, external to the study area. The level of service doesn't change at the main street and the hot street. Uh, um, and um, and um, North Ave intersection. Um, it doesn't really change at any of the other unsignalized intersections that we looked at. So, so the overall, the project impact is, is fairly, fairly minimal from a traffic perspective. Um, understanding that, you know, the designs that have, and changes to the design that have been made have been, have been intended to address the concerns of the T A C and the Z B A. And uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. I saw that Lieutenant Anderson and Mr. Keely had their hands raised. Uh, I'm assuming you wanted to respond a little bit, so uh, go ahead.
Sure, Mr. Chair, just a couple of points of clarification. So uh, first, those twenty mile an hour signs, they appear to be regulatory signs. Black and white speed limit signs are typically regulatory, but uh those, uh, there is no special speed regulation for Nahad Street. Uh, there never has been. I suspect that that series of twenty mile an hour signs is from the old uh school, uh, the Franklin. Um, and were just either replaced years ago when they shouldn't have been or uh, or what, but there is, uh, there's no special speed regulation for uh Nahad Street. So uh, those should be advisory signs maybe for the curve or be removed altogether, but uh there is no special speed regulation for Nahad Street filed. So that's just a point of clarification. The no parking signs that uh, that continues to be a point of confusion. I'll try to give you the gist of it, Mr. Chair. Basically, we're concerned about the overflow parking since they're not providing uh what the bylaw calls for. I know they don't have to cuz they're forty B. However, we've had a lot of other forty B developments come close, meet, and even some cases exceeded where we've had concerns. So I know they're not required to, but uh, you know, years ago, uh, the town voted uh to adopt that. And my phone continues to ring when there's developments where shortly after they open, they find their street that's adjacent to that development is being clogged up by visitors and they wanna know how they can address that. Uh, and then they run into the issue of what do we do? Do we restrict parking on one side of the street cuz uh roadway is being clogged up now? Do we make it resident parking only, but then a visitor nurse can't, can't park there or my kids home from college can't park there? So the point of the no parking wasn't to say, can you guys provide no parking signs, which I know they said they would? It's that, if that happens, it places undue burden on the residents to decide, well, geez, right now we can park there. There isn't a condition on these side streets where there's a ton of cars. They just enjoy the ability to have the occasional car parked in front of their house on these side streets. Visiting nurse, somebody dropping something off, a visitor. It's not like uh the streets are clogged with cars right now as it stands. But it puts the residents in an unfair position. If, if this condition does present itself from the overflow parking, what do we do now? Do we go to the T A C and try to argue for one side of the street parking only? And then who gets to park in front of their house? The left side or the right side, the e- even on the odd side? The point of that was, I get that they would provide the no parking signs. I appreciate that, but my response to that was, if this is gonna create a condition that you have to get ahead of and try to mitigate with no parking on public roads, then maybe the parking demand is already going to exceed what you're providing. That was, that was the gist of that. That I don't think it's a fair ask of our residents on side streets to have to choose, do I have the ability to park a car in front of my house here or there when I wanna move a car out of the driveway? I have a visitor. Do we have to decide which street of, of, of which side of the street we're gonna be able to park on as a neighborhood? Because now we have all these visitors from this development that has inadequate parking that doesn't meet our bylaw. Um, do we have to decide now where we get to park? Uh, there isn't clogged up streets for these side streets just yet. I see the potential because some other developments in town have caused my phone to ring and uh they're, they're, they're experiencing the same concern now. What do we do? What do we do now? We have this overflow parking. It makes it tough for cars to get in and out, especially if they're parking closer to the intersection. So now one car is coming down the street while one car is trying to exit the street. Because what happens is people don't wanna walk, right? We're all a little lazy. We wanna park close to the door, right? We wanna park close to where we're going. So they're not gonna park further down Traverse Street. They're gonna park close to the intersection. Now you get two cars parked close to the intersection. So now one guy is trying to exit from the hut. One guy is trying to come down Traverse Street from the hut and it's a game of chicken. Who gets to go first? Who's kind enough to let the other one go? And yes, could that exist now in its current form? It certainly could. But from the residents that have uh, that have come to uh traffic advisory, from those that have called me, they don't have an issue right now. Our concern was that this could create an issue. Uh, Wilson Road was another one. That's a private way. We can't tow a ticket cars on Wilson Road unless they're uh impeding the safe travel of the roadway, blocking the street. Uh, maybe uh if they were parked in front of a fire hydrant or handicap space, but as a police department on a private way, we're limited to the amount of enforcement action we can take. Right now, the residents have told me in previous meetings, they have no issue with anybody parking on Wilson Road besides people that live there. Or they're visitors, right? There's no issue. The response from the developer was, well, they can, we'll, we'll provide them with the no parking signs, but they have to now do something about that if there's twenty cars parked on Wilson Road. They're the ones that are gonna have to not only have it posted, which the development team said that they would pay for the signs, but they're gonna have to come up with some type of a system to identify who actually is a resident there. And they're gonna have to contact the tow truck company and they're gonna have to incur the liability of towing that vehicle cuz the police department, we can't do it. It's a private way. We can only tow cars from a private way under certain circumstances. So just because somebody isn't a resident of Wilson Road, I would, if somebody called right now to the police station, I would say, sorry, we can't tow it. You have to give them notice and you have to call a tow truck company on your own and you have to deal with it. So if they don't have an issue now, just adding no parking signs isn't gonna solve that issue. Uh, if people still park there, they're the ones that are gonna have to deal with it. The point of this whole parking issue was that if you have inadequate parking supply and it does create an issue on our side streets, it's the residents that are gonna have to deal with it. It's the other ones that are gonna be burdened by it. So that was the gist of that, not whether they provide no parking signs or there's already an existing uh crazy parking condition. There isn't. But I'm trying to keep in mind the people that are living near this proposed uh development or what they may have to endure. And that's from my own experience from other developments that frankly have come close to meeting the parking uh by law, or in some cases, they're not forty B and they've met it and we still have uh some parking issues on side streets. So that was that. Uh, I had one more from the hot street. I believe this was about the fire apparatus. I wish you had somebody from the fire department here. I don't think there is anybody. Bottom line is, yes, they typically try to park on the main road. They try not to get stuck anywhere so they can make a quick exit to the next call if they have to, right? There's, it would be better suited if there was some type of a driveway or something off of Nahad Street that they could park their apparatus. Could they navigate the site technically? They're saying they can. Uh, they're saying that it's gonna be engineered in this in a certain way that they're gonna be able to navigate that site. But having them park in the hot street, it just creates another mess for the hot street. Now we have to tie up two police officers to direct traffic around the fire engine. Two police officers that might get called away to another call. They're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And now there's two police officers tied up somewhere else. And if they have to leave, they'll leave in a fire truck in the middle of the road. The cars have to navigate. You see what I mean? So a, a little bit of adjustment to the site plan, I don't know, maybe, but maybe they could alleviate that by having a, a driveway in the front or something else. I don't know that this development would even allow for it. Uh, but that's, the Nahad Street fire truck parking in front of the uh development. Yeah, they're probably gonna park on the hot street. Uh, it's gonna clog up the hot street. And do they do it right now for a single-family residence? Yeah, they do. And it's, it's a pain. It ties up two police officers sometimes. Uh, but this is a hundred units. They're gonna be there quite frequently. You know, they may be one off here and there to a residence on the hot street for a medical, God forbid, but uh, you, you add a hundred units, they're gonna be there quite often in that one spot. And it's one spot that has poor sightline visibility exiting the driveway. So tho- those are our concerns. It's, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, Scott is a professional. He does a great job. He's been before T A C countless times. He knows what he's doing. But we know the town. And we know the location. We know the geography. We know the residents. We know the issues. We know the crashes. We know the facts as they present themselves in that neighborhood. And the bottom line is, there's some bad crashes on the hot street and day one, if it is uh built as presented to you, it's already just barely squeaking by by industry standards. That, that to me uh is not good enough. Uh, but that's, that's what I have there. I know Matt has some uh, some more technical uh um opinions to provide, but uh just wanna clarify a couple of those points about uh the other signage and the twenty mile an hour.
Great. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, and I'll try not to get too technical, but I just wanna give a little bit more context on our site distance concerns. So Scott is correct. Uh, we um, in the industry typically designed to the eighty-fifth percentile speed. Um, and that's, that's pretty much universal. Um, but I just wanna clarify what the minimum means. So intersection site distance is for the people that are leaving a driveway and looking onto the main street. So in our case, the big concern is people leaving the driveway and looking east on the hunt to see vehicles traveling westbound on the hunt. If you had adequate intersection site distance, the vehicle exiting the driveway would have enough time to see the vehicle pull out, turn left, and that vehicle on the hunt would not have to slow down. That's what we consider adequate intersection site distance. What minimum means, what minimum means is the person exiting the driveway can only see so far as will give the, the, the vehicle on the hot street enough time to hit their brakes and avoid a collision. That's all the minimum is. So anytime someone pulls out of the driveway and they can see a hundred and eighty-five feet, they can't see beyond that. And there's a car coming on the hunt westbound at twenty-eight miles an hour. That car can put their brakes on and avoid a collision. That's gonna be the everyday condition. If a car is going thirty-five miles an hour, there might be a collision. So the minimum, yes, the minimum is met. Um, but I think the minimum is a, is a substandard condition and, and results in people having to slow down and jam their brakes on on the hot street to avoid a collision. I, in my mind, that's not, that's not acceptable in this case. And, and, and Mr. Thornton mentioned a lot of other streets that may have site distance constraints. Those are pre-existing conditions. They have a clean slate here and they're introducing a driveway in a spot that's unsafe, in my opinion.
All right. I, I agree, Matt. Not because I, I didn't agree with uh Mr. Thornton's statement on that. For the same reason, they, they can create a new thing. They don't have to have this site plan. And also he referenced other driveways on the hot street. Those are one and two people pulling out. This is four hundred and fifty-four trips a day uh with an opportunity, you know, for crashes. So yeah, I, I'm not buying what he's selling on that with all due respect to him. Uh, Mr. Thornton, you had your hand up?
Yes, um, and I do apologize. My connection is terrible, so I'll be brief. Um, I, I think that the um, you know, the, the, just to, just to respond a little bit to Lieutenant Anderson, uh, I think that the uh while the, related to the twenty mile per hour speed signs, um, while they're um, while those speeds may be advisory, uh, or tho- those speed signs may be advisory in uh, in practice. Um, in reality, they're, they're regulatory because, you know, you've got those, those black and white signs. Um, and you know, I am, I have, I am not going to tell you the uh, um, I'm not gonna tell the, the police what's a, what, what's a law and, and what's not. But uh, but the, the folks that see those signs, they see them as, as black and white and they think that they're regulatory. So um, so you know, un- understood that, that they're not, understood that they're, they're more advisory. Um, and in, in terms of the um, in terms of the, the, the parking um, on the neighborhood streets, you know, we, again, wh- whether, you know, the issue was only that we, we don't, we don't feel we have an issue. We don't feel that we have a parking problem. We feel that we have more than sufficient parking. So, so we're, we were, we were trying to be good neighbors to provide or to offer to provide no parking signs. Um, and, and that's, that's been made clear that it, it's not necessary. But um, you know, we thought that there was a problem because this was, this, these were comments that came out of the meeting. So you know, that's, it's clear that, it's clear now that, that it's not an issue. Uh, an issue. Uh but again, we think that we have sufficient parking for our development. Perfect Fit Parking Report indicates that we have sufficient parking. Uh we have, you know, we're within walking distance of a bus line and commuter rail. Um we think that uh the going trend is for less parking in the greater Boston area and we think that uh, that this development won't be any different. Thank you.
Board members, any comments, questions?
I think Kasumi has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kasumi. I didn't see that.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make comment about listening to the meetings and meetings and meetings and all they talk about is based on the datas and studies and how they are meeting like the minimum regulations like requirement. So they are providing like a good neighbor for designs, but like as myself, as a designer, I deal with multifamily buildings, like housing buildings, senior buildings and it, that's not how you design the buildings and site, like you have to work with the neighbors and like a meeting after meetings after meetings, like everybody's like against it and then everybody's like frustrated. So I like, I, I feel like is any of the development team like actually driving, walking, biking on the hunt street like morning, like lunchtime, nighttime, like see how the traffic is, like have you, have any of any of you like stuck in the traffic on the hunt street? How frustrating it is, like how it's not safe walking, like I, I'm just like very frustrated, like I just want to say like it's not about meeting the minimum regulations to build and you know, develop the site and build the buildings, like it's about like working with the neighbors, like building something that goes with the neighbors. It's just, it feels like they are just seeing it because we are meeting the, the requirement minimum. We may be meeting the requirement. We're just going to add more signs. It's, it's it, I just want to make sure like make a comment about it's very frustrating.
I hear you.
Thank you.
Yep, uh Lieutenant Anderson, so are you here and go back up?
Yes, thank you. Any chance I could share my screen?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Can you see that, Mr. Chip?
Yep.
So this is the uh MAST D O T uh crash portal. Anybody can access this. Just Google MAST D O T crash portal and, and Scott and I did, uh you know, to his credit, we, we went over the crashes uh along the hot street and uh he did a great job of breaking them down into like quarter mile segments. We had some offline meetings, uh preparation for some of our T A C meetings where we, where we went over, you know, the crash history there. Uh this is from twenty nineteen. Uh the, these are all the crashes. Uh some of them, you know, are, are at the intersections, right? Either on the Farm Street end or the other main street end, but you're looking at in the last I don't know, handful of years, about fifty crashes in the area of the hot street uh. On your left-hand side, you have property damage only, but then about half of the crashes have an injury. Uh luckily, no fatal injury, but you, you have half of those crashes resulting in an injury. You zoom in here and you can kind of see, you know, this crashes right along, right along Travis Street, right in the area of uh of one hundred. And uh you know, some of those crashes, uh I, I pulled up a couple of these and uh I looked at the photos, a couple of them I, I responded to personally. Uh sixty one hot street uh vehicle right under the guardrail totaled uh one hundred and a hot street, single vehicle crash was traveling eastbound, across the westbound travel lane, crashed into a tree, uh ro- partially rolled, uh airbag deployment. Uh I believe the uh, the operator had to be uh extricated by the fire department, you know, John's life, that type of uh, of an operation. Uh a little bit further down the hot street, I looked at some other ones, uh one I responded to personally and was mentioned uh by some of our uh residents during public uh comment at T A C meetings. Uh they lost power for, you know, handful of hours uh. Uh broke a uh, a utility pole in half, airbag deployment, people sent to the hospital. Uh you know, half of your crashes are, are are injuries. Uh and there's, there's a fair amount of crashes for one roadway. There's some roadways in town, you know, to Scott's point. Yeah, we can engineer every development to uh, to have the best uh sightline visibility possible. But uh there's certain streets in town, it just doesn't make sense. Uh and some of those streets in town have those sightline issues, but they have no crashes. They just, they're not cut through streets. This is just a unique street in town and it's uh, it's where it's positioned. Uh there's some forty B and other developments uh that have gone in and they've exceeded the uh the uh sightline distances and uh you know, they just don't have this type of crash history or roadway geometry or you know, they, they don't have the speed that uh, that the hot street can see. And I think that some of your eighty fifth percentile speed, you know, I'm not second guessing his study, but what I'm, I'm offering to you is that uh you know, some of that is caused by the queuing, uh the traffic queuing at peak hours. And uh because of that, in my opinion, that skews the overall eighty fifth percentile on the average speeds, right? And when you have traffic queuing that goes from the junction of Maine and the hunt all the way back past thirty two, I mean, we had a, a traffic advisory committee meeting on thirty two Nahat Street. I pulled up Google Maps and did a street view and, and it was already past the driveway, the queuing, whatever day that Google Maps was out filming the hot street, it was already passed there and that was just a random image. I just pulled it up on Google Maps. So my point is that's going to impact uh the eighty fifth percentile speed when you have that type of traffic queuing. Uh and we're seeing crashes there that uh, you know, knock on wood, no fatalities, but I, I don't want uh half of our crashes on a uh, a busy road in town, half of them to be injuries at all. We're never going to have zero crashes anywhere in town. It's, it's impossible. People are going to get involved in car crashes. But to have half of them uh result in injury, some of them pretty serious. I mean, it says non-fatal, so it's, that's anything besides fatal. Uh you know, it could be some pretty serious injuries and there were some, there's suspected uh serious injury on, on quite a handful of them. So uh that's where my concern comes from. And uh, you know, like Kasumi said, uh yeah, the bare minimum, it's uh, it's not good. And then when you add in some of these, uh these plus factors, it just uh it makes it, uh makes it even worse. Thank you, Mr. Chip.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else on the board? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? Yeah, just one, uh Mickey Philly, uh one quick comment was um with all due respect to um your traffic engineer, I don't know, he may have left. The uh the, you know, the world is moving towards closer uh development, towards M E T As and you mentioned walking to it and biking to it. You have to be honest, just by going down that street, none of that's going to happen. It's, it's too thin a street. There is no sidewalk. And now so that won't happen. And now you're going to add four hundred trips to it. Um what we haven't talked a lot about is the high school at the end of the street. And the Volk at the end of the street and the buses that go down there. And that unique condition makes it more dangerous and it makes it more dangerous when there's four hundred trips coming in and out. And every time they come in and out, that stops the traffic, that slows the emergency vehicles. I know I'm not an expert. We have them here. I'm sure if you ask them, they would say that when, when they uh, a street like that is clogged up because people are pulling out and have to stop. You know, emergency vehicles aren't able to traverse the street. So um you know, I, I, I disagree with your, it's going to be a, a, a biker and walker paradise because I think we all know it's not going to be.
Okay. Anything else on traffic board before we move on to the other issues? Lieutenant Anderson, Mr. Keely, any final words?
No, none from you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see, Mr. Cameron came on, Mr. Panos, you had a couple of other things that you, you brought uh, you sent to the board on Friday.
Yeah, so um I think that uh if it pleases the board, we can go on to lighting.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's just get through.
So point of order, Mr. Chair, just before we go further, is, is the um Lieutenant Anderson and, and, and Matt staying because there could be questions. Okay, I just want to make sure they weren't dropping off. There's, there's public testimony, but there might be questions. All right, thanks.
Yeah, and actually, be- before we move on, Mr. Panos, I guess I'll put it out there. Uh ask you the question. You know, you, you, you've seen the T A C study. You've seen what they've said about safety. You, you, you've heard about the concerns. Is there any consideration to making any site plan changes or changes to the project or the size of the project based on that?
We are certainly open to having a discussion. I mean, I, I'd like to drill down.
With all due respect to Mr. Thornton, the, the, the changes that were made were signage, moving a bush and a fence back, assigning parking spaces, they really weren't addressing any of the safety issues. You know, tha- that's moving deck chairs on the Titanic type of stuff. So it just put it out there, you know, because
If, if I could address that though, I mean, as Mr. Keely went through his comments, he identified most of them is non-critical. The major comment that he has identified is the site distance issue. And I'm told that on the east side, we meet the minimum. On the west side, we exceed it. Uh is there anything that we can do to correct that? We are open to having the discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe I can voice the question in a different way. Mr. Panos, through all the working group and everything else, you weren't, I use the word density. Density is included in size, number of units. What I've heard here tonight is that between the driveways, yes, the minimums are met. Are you prepared to reduce the number of units at all to help mi- mitigate many of these concerns that the T A C has brought up? That you said you wouldn't consider that until T A C has given their given their
opinion, yeah.
Well, Mr. Mr.
And we've now done that. Are you willing to reduce the size of the project?
Um, we don't believe necessarily that that is the only solution to um to the concern that has been narrowed down to sight distance addressed by moving the driveway.
Well, I, I would add, Mr. Panos, that
I'm sorry?
I, I would add, Mr. Panos, though, although you've prevented the perfect fit parking study, I don't buy into it. I don't think that's accurate. I don't think you have enough parking. I don't think that Lieutenant Anderson and Matt Keely said that either. I don't want to put words in their mouth. And I also heard a lot about still concerns about site circulation. So I think there's more than just sightlines, which is very important because that really relates to safety. Uh so I would say there's more concern from the T A C memo and the T A C than just sightlines. So you'll have to forgive me, you know, I, I disagree with your assessment that we're down to one issue.
And, and secondly, Mr. Chairman, we heard throughout this entire process from Mr. Panos that once the T A C was done, we could have a quest, we could have size.
I, I want to clarify that um because I didn't say it was just the T A C, it was the data in a whole. And we simply have you heard Scott Thornton's presentation, you've read his voluminous memos and responses. And we simply have a disagreement as to what the data actually says. We do think the with all due respect, Mr. Chair, you can tell us that the perfect it, it doesn't fit, but tell us why. Tell us why it doesn't fit. We presented it as evidence. Hold on a second, please. We presented it as evidence and the whole point of the perfect fit parking analysis is not, is not focused on forty B. The, the whole point of perfect fit is to suggest that um zoning bylaws across the board and parking requirements within them. Uh z- zoning bylaws and ordinances because it's studies municipalities across the board, cities and towns are simply overparked, create an overparked situation. And they, they've studied hundreds of developments and hundreds of communities within the metropolitan area, district area. So we do take stock in it. And there is a disagreement, but tell us why it doesn't, it doesn't apply here. Tell us why it doesn't apply here, but it applies in the hundreds of other towns that have been part or developments that have been part of the, the study. We looked at it and we presented the evidence. I, I think we're at least owed um that, that, that feedback. Because we need to understand why it doesn't fit in Wakefield, but it fits everywhere else. Um it, so there's, there's a, a, a genuine disagreement in what the data says. We said it at T A C, you were there on the twenty sixth of July. We finished that hearing with a genuine disagreement. We simply feel that site, we meet the sightline distance requirements. You guys and Matt Keely want us to exceed the sight distance requirement. And all I'm suggesting is there may be other ways of um of concluding that without necessarily having a density discussion. What I'm not prepared to say uh, Mr. Tarbell directly is that we can only address the concern of moving the driveway and even some of the site circulation issues uh simply by reducing density. That's a simple fix. What I am suggesting is we're open to a further discussion.
Mr. Panos, what I'm asking for, you have denied the opportunity to have a discussion regarding, I'll use the word. You, you have denied the opportunity to have the discussion until all the data is presented. The first meeting you had, every meeting we've come to, we said, can we talk about size? Everybody's concerned about the size fitting into the neighborhood. All of the requirements regarding safety. Are, can we? And you said, no, we're not ready till all the data's been presented. I'm asking a simple yes or no question. Are you prepared to reduce the size of this project at all, based on all the data that's been presented?
When you say size, are you talking about density?
Number of units.
No, we're not, not at this point.
Thank you. I just want to know the answer.
Not at this point.
Well, this point, we're, I we're almost done with the trial, so I, I, with the, with the program, so I'm not sure.
I hope it's not a trial.
This point means, so no, it's, okay, I just want, that's, thank you. We got an answer.
Well, so, Mr. Panos, when would this discussion take place, by the way? The hundred and eighty five days is up next Wednesday. So a hundred eighty, excuse me, you know what I mean? Um so you suggest that there could be this dialogue, but you, you won't extend. When do we have the
We're not there to extend until we can have an earnest discussion about this. And I know
We're not happy, but the one that's not have, allowing us to have an earnest discussion is you. You have not allowed us to have a discussion on density. That's intellectually dishonest when every
Look, I don't want to step on you, Chair, but to call me intellectually dishonest is basically calling me a liar. And it's not the first time you've done that. And it doesn't advance your cause to question my integrity. And it's about the fourth time you've used that favorite catchphrase of yours and I'm kind of tired of it. Let's put that aside. Let's put the vitriol aside and let, eh eh, don't suggest that I shut down a conversation on density. What I've done is I followed the forty B rulebook. Okay, you don't talk about density until den- until you've exhausted. Until dent, until you've exhausted all of the alternatives.
Mr. Panos.
Nothing else, but.
Mr. Panos, we've approved many forty Bs in this town, and there's many ways to go about it. You have your way and your preferred way. That doesn't mean it's the only way. So you're right, I'm I'm. I've I'm about at my limit with you too. So let's move on to the lighting. You you don't seem to be wanting to have a conversation about this. At the end, we'll we'll swing back to this and see if you want to extend the time and have a discussion about sight lines and driveways.
This, Mr. Chairman, does it make any sense while. Traffic and and parking and whatnot is on the tip of our thought process. To open it up to public here, to public testimony now. And exhaust the traffic discussion as compared to wait, just a thought.
Well, I wanted the public to be able to comment on all the evidence that's presented tonight.
Okay, all right.
Traffic, but.
Yeah, got it, okay. Just a thought.
Yeah.
I. No problem. I'm with you.
All right, Mr. Baso.
All right, thank you, Chair. Stefan Obasso with S P Design, one twenty six Dodge Street in Beverly. Uh, we took the comments and the discussion from last month. We got some good feedback on the lighting. Um, so we went back to the design. And, uh, we've effectively eliminated light spill off of the property. Uh, we did that, um, looking at spacing of light fixtures. Uh, we also reduced the height. Of the pole mounted light fixtures. You've mentioned that typically like to see pole mounted fixtures no taller than fifteen feet. Uh, so the proposed pole mounted fixtures are now fourteen feet, um, around the property. Uh, that helped to reduce, uh, eliminate any kind of light spill off of the property. Also, a little bit more information on the fixtures that we're proposing. Uh, we talked about, uh, light shielding as one technique, uh, but in speaking with the lighting designer. The fixtures that are specified are using, um. Advanced block optics that direct the diodes within the L E D light fixture. Um, so rather than a shield that. Kind of blocks and reflects the light physically, um, these diodes are directional within the fixture. Um, so that's highly effective at getting the light to point in the direction you want. Um, so we've tinkered with the, uh, the lighting output and the direction and the spacing. Uh, we have added a few, uh, more fixtures, um, around the perimeter of the site. Uh, to make up for the reduced height, um, to achieve our coverage. Uh, we've also added information on lighting in the garage. Um, so we're using these, uh, shielded pendant light fixtures in the garage. Uh, so the edge of the fixture comes down and blocks the bulb. Um, so looking in the garage, you won't see the actual, um, light bulb, uh, so so that means that you won't have. The glare of looking at the light fixture. If you looked in and seen, um. A bright, uh, um, a fluorescent light in the garage, an old school type light. Um, that's really what what, uh, creates the high intensity light is the glare. Uh, so these ones are shielded, it's a downlight. Um, if you do see light in through the openings in the garage, be more of an even glow, um, rather than the hot point of individual fixtures. We've also taken, um, into account the, uh, balcony lights up above, um, so we have, uh, those in the lighting output. Um, they're accounted for, um, in the calculations on the photometric plan. Um, there was a question if they would be on timers, they're not, they're individually switched. And there was also a question about, um. Uh, lighting at egress doors, um, so the building code, uh, mandates, uh. Minimum lighting levels at any, uh, point of egress, um, so we were exceeding all of those, uh, illumination minimums. Um. The code requires a foot candle for interior egress and not less than point two foot candles at, uh, exterior locations. Um, so we made sure to exceed the point two, um, at all the, uh. Exits, entrances, um, and all the, uh, sidewalks around the property. Um, we've also included. Uh, the footprints of the neighboring homes. Um, so, you know, outside of the property line with our fence on the, um, the side yard here. You can see the distance to the house over here to the west. Um, you can also see. We're reading, uh, zeros in terms of light spills, that means. On our property here, we have one foot candle, almost two foot candle. About three foot candles, um, closer to the sidewalk. On the neighboring property, we have zero, um. Right on the other side of the fence and then also all the way over to the house here. Can see likewise on the east. We have this home here with all zeros. And then. Down here on Wilson, you can see the other, uh, closest homes. Then likewise on the south of the site here. Uh, I know it's hard to read, so I can zoom in on any particular area, um, if you'd like to see those in more detail.
Okay, Kasumi, I see your hand up.
What is the spec of the garage light?
The garage light is this one, um. Give me a sec. Um, this is it here.
No, the specification of the actual light fixture, like how big is the fixture? And like, what's the lumen point?
Um. It, so we have two different, um, lighting specs for the garage, two different strengths, um, so. This is what the actual fixture that was used in the photometric plan is. Don't have the actual lumen output spec for the fixture, but we can zoom in.
What is the size of the fixture?
Um, I don't have the exact size. I think it's about a twelve inch.
Okay, what is the height of the garage ceiling?
Well, there's a twelve foot floor to floor typically, um, we have a about a nine six bottom of beam, um, so we're anticipating that the fixtures would be hung. Right around, uh, bottom of beam height to clear, um, the floor structure above.
Okay, what is the spacing of the light fixtures?
Uh, they're about, uh, eight eighteen feet, um, side to side, twenty four, twenty two feet. Um, across the aisle here. The lighting designer did include additional lights at the garage doors. Um, uh, factor when you come in, um, from the exterior during the day is that. Coming from a bright exterior environment, um, into a a dark garage can cause, um. By contrast, a very dark environment, it can be dangerous, so they tend to. Provide additional lights at the garage doors, that's why you see a tighter spacing, um, right by the garage doors compared to. Throughout the rest of the garage.
Um, those fixtures are usually like twenty to twenty five feet. Um, on center with that size of the fixture in. It it's gonna be brighter than the daylight, especially where the the clusters are. You have like. Like, three times more fixtures, the same fixtures. I I I think you need to look at that again.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're relying on the lighting designer and the calculations and best practices, um, that they see for safety.
Yeah, but like a fifty fifty three, fifty four, fifty fours, like. I I think it's way too high, and especially like it's gonna look like. Your bottom floor is gonna look like light box from outside. Especially nighttime.
It's shielded, that was.
Yeah, so I think.
The light bulb is sealed it, but that's not the point. It's the whole garage is gonna look like light box. That's what I'm trying to get to it.
And I understand that, Kasumi, um, but what I'm just suggesting is the. Uh, garage itself is shielded and there are slats that allow airflow, but. Am I right? Steph, no, eh, explain this. I mean, you're the designer.
Yeah, I think that so the, we have two competing concerns. Do you worry about the light at night and the. Lighting designer in this instance is worried about, um. Uh, visibility in the daytime, so I think it would be a simple fix to put the additional light fixtures. Um, so probably these ones in the middle and then every other through here on a timer. Uh, so that they would only be on during day, daylight hours, um, when we need that additional light. Um, for the transition coming inside from outside and then at night, um. You know, these these ones would be off and we would have the more typical, um, spacing that yields, you know, anywhere from. Six to, uh, eight, eight or nine, um, foot candles. Would that, would that take care of your concern?
Um. Just, can you just take a look at it with your lighting designer again, and some of the fixtures, especially at the end, is way too close to the the wall itself? Um, so just, just to look at it with with your design again.
Yeah, Kasumi, Kasumi, if I may, uh, I'm just trying to understand your concern. Is your concern light bleed from the garage? Or how it operates within the garage?
Uh, both, within the garage, I think it's too much light, but also I'm concerned it's gonna be too bright looking from outside. And it's not about the fixture, it's sealed it. I understand that. It's it's the whole garage space as a space.
Yeah, we could take that as a condition, um, that the lights be on, the additional lights be on a timer, uh, because I think. You know, common sense at night, likewise, you'd have the opposite problem, um, that you're trying to solve during the day. If it. It's too bright, um, you know, at the. Garage door, you're exiting and then you're going, uh, outside, you know, that would create the same condition. So I think that would be a a good condition to include that the. Additional lights are on a timer, um, so there's, uh, lower lighting output at night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, Dave.
Yeah, quick question, um, you had said that. By lowering the the poles on the outside, you you increased the number of, or the the number of them were increased. Can you just confirm how many we. That were on the previous plan and how many are on the new plan at this lower height?
Um, I don't have the number in front of me, um, I can dig that up for you. It'll take a, take a few minutes here.
I was hoping you knew the or would be able to represent the before and after. You said more were added, so.
Yeah, I come back to you, Dave, do you mind?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public too, just wanted them to understand what was being proposed here. We're talking about more lighting at a lower distance, but still more lights, right, so. I I understand that the spill and the numbers outside the property zone, but, uh, just more lights sp- spread around the property. That's all. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Hearing seeing none. Uh, if you can look that up, maybe we can move on.
Sure.
Mr. Panos, you had another, uh. Mr. Cameron, I believe.
Yes, however, there were other issues that the, uh, board had concerns about with regard to lighting, I believe, code issues and so forth. Steph, no, do you want to quickly wrap up? How you address those things and, uh, it was a diagram you provided for the, uh, for the Conway residence, I believe.
Sure, we can jump into that, I think.
But why don't you talk about the code first?
Cover the code at doorways, yeah.
Yeah.
He did that.
Oh, he did that, pardon me.
He talked about the light levels at entrance.
Got it. It was that to your satisfaction? I think you brought that up, Mr. Kova.
Yeah, that's what the code is, that's on file.
Yep, good, good. All right.
Um, so we were asked to provide a little bit of additional detail, uh, at eighteen Wilson Road, the property line with the development site. Um, so we got an aerial view and, uh, flow up, um, partial of the, uh, civil site plan. Um, so we just noted noted these two views up, um. We noted, uh, where the proposed fence is going, six foot fence on top of our retaining wall. Um, and also the grade, there's a little bit of grade change along the driveway here. Uh, so the aerial shows the existing condition, but the note calls out, uh, what the proposed grade will be. Um, so in, uh, Mr. Kova's backyard, we have an elevation of about. Ninety four point six in the back corner, on the other side of the fence, we have an elevation of ninety seven. Um. Over here, we have an elevation of ninety nine. Um, there is a grade change, um, in between the two lots here. Where the elevation goes up to about one oh six point seven. Um, so you have a bit of a lower point on one side and then a higher area in the middle where the taller trees are. Um, there's about a seven foot grade change. Um, where the, uh, the driveway on the development is seven feet lower than the existing grade. Um, here on the adjacent properties. Civil plan here. Um, same, same general notes, um, this shows the extent of the fence. Um, there is a, uh, steeper grade cut here on the property line, so. You can see in the drive aisle, here's the elevation ninety nine. The one oh six over here kind of straddling, uh, the two yards. Um. So this is, uh, meant to illustrate that between the, um, six foot fence on the retaining wall and the seven foot. Um, grade change going up, um, I know we're not talking a lot about headlights, uh, but this is just providing a little bit of additional information. Um, on the screening, what's happening along the property line here.
Yeah, any comments or questions? Okay, hearing seeing none, uh, let's move on.
Uh, and last but not least, there were, um. Responses to. Bill Reno's last memo, actually Tim Wilson's last memo. Uh, from D P W and Town Engineering. That resulted in some site plan modifications, clarifications. And the storm water manage, uh, modifications to the stormwater management plan, uh, Mr. Cameron is online, there he is. Uh, and I'll, uh, ask him through you, Mr. Chair, to take it away.
Please do.
I'm Mr. Chairman, this is the board, uh, for the record, Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group. Sixty six M Street in Danvers, Massachusetts, um, thanks for having us tonight. Um, I don't have too much to present, so I can be relatively quick. I think at our last meeting, we were. More or less at the finish line with the civil engineering portion of this project. Um, there were a few open items with regards to, um. Offsite improvements that were open, uh, Mr. Rena- Renaun, I had not had a chance to meet yet on that. Uh, we did have that meeting on Tuesday this week, uh, and he outlined what his, uh, anticipated, uh, recommendations would be. Uh, for, uh, what I expect to be the conditions, um, this dealt with water main, um, upgrades, uh, where we talked about. Uh, replacing the water main between, uh, traverse, uh, in Hart Street. Um, uh, or or, uh, helping, uh, or supporting a Mass Works, uh, application to replace all of the water main in the Hart Street. Uh, which oftentimes those those require, you know, uh. Certain types of development projects to support gr- uh, granting of that that funding from the state to pay for that work. Um, but that that sounded. Um, but that, that sounded reasonable to me. Um, uh, the other fees, I N I fees, things of that nature are consistent with, uh, what everybody else is subject to, that, that is of course reasonable. Um, and we talked about, you know, sections of the sewer. And, and drainage that, that he'd want us to CCTV to make sure it's intact and clean, and that's again, that's. Industry standard procedure these days and, and, um, typically what happens is you, you go in and you. Any other spot repair, you, you fix any, any broken, you know, pipes or things like that in the, in the, in the town system, so. Uh, there were no substantial changes to the plans, um. Uh, minor detail adjustments, uh, small things, uh, nothing, I think that rises to, uh. You know, presenting anything tonight as far as a plan, there weren't really any changes there, so, uh, that, that's it. If I'm happy to answer, if there are any other questions about it, but. Um, we seem to be, um, I haven't seen the finished memo from, the final memo from engineering, but, uh. It's my understanding following our meeting on Tuesday, we're, we're at the finish line there.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board?
Thank you.
I'm assuming that's the end of your presentation, Mr. Parnell.
The chair, Mr. Chair, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Dave.
Sorry, coming off mute. So I don't know, maybe we haven't seen the final, final, but. Um. Again, I, I, I did read in the, the memo about DPW, you know. Um, making some recommendations around some of the waivers that have been requested, right, about. Storm drain system and storm water management bylaw, you know, that's in the waivers, so. I don't know that we've settled on that, they've responded to it, but again, I just think it's. It, it's another aspect to this, right, that. Again, maybe speaks to massing and density and the number of units and the size of the building and. The capacity of this, the, the storm water management system and how it ties into the city. Um, again, we're not the experts, the engineering department, the DBWR, that's why we get their comments, but I still see some things in there that. I, I, I don't know that are closed, they're just potential conditions, or they're. They're saying in a couple of cases I read, they're saying the board shouldn't waive this. You know, waive this requirement, so. I don't know that we've settled on that or it's just a disagreement, but again, without the engineering department here, Bill Renault or somebody. I don't know that it's really closed. I don't know if we're at the finish line entirely in my mind, but again, we don't have him here to speak for them. Um, but that's just my thoughts, Mr. Chair, and I think there's still a couple of things in that memo that aren't quite maybe settled, um, if we were to move forward.
Yeah, it's in the, uh. The applicant in the, uh. In the project eligibility letter from the state, you know, one of the bullet points is applicants should work with municipality to address water and sewer capacity concerns in the area. So, uh, it's definitely something they've been asked to do by the state to work with us to do that, so.
Again, I can respond to that a little, um, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think, uh, declared from a technical and from a water resource, sewer resource, uh, perspective, that piece of it. Um, there, I'm not aware of any other comments that, that, you know, uh, the. Matter of the waivers is one of. Uh, which, which, uh, Trini Panos can more respond to, but from the technical perspective. We, we held all those requirements. There are administrative and procedural and other things within the bylaws, so it's. It's a blanket waiver that was requested under those, but from a technical perspective. You know, we've met and exceeded all the current standards from, from all those aspects. Um, so I'm speaking from the perspective of the engineering aspect of it. Not necessarily, uh, the, the comments about the waivers. Um, I think that's, that's, that's kind of baked into the, the forty B, you know, process.
Yep. Gotcha. Thank you.
And i- if you don't mind, I can jump in a little bit, um. The revised waiver request did make specific reference to. Uh, technical compliance of various stormwater regulations in the town. Uh. Scott hit the nail on the head, it, it. The specific rate waiver request related to. Certain, uh, fees and eh. You know, inspections and, and process that went outside of that, of course, the zoning board of appeals acts. Acts for, uh, all of the town boards, and really it wasn't only in that spirit that the waiver. To that extent was requested and also to the extent that. Uh. We would seek waiver from them if they are. Not uniformly applied throughout the, throughout the town and throughout any other projects of like kind. Um, so really that's what that waiver request was for, but there was agnol- an acknowledgement of technical compliance. Um, so I, I, I really didn't want to go down that rabbit hole necessarily, and I, I, I don't want to make it more. Uh, than it is, um, I think we are on the same page. From an engineering perspective, and that's, I think, the most important thing, that we're not seeking waivers because we are in technical compliance. Um, we're only seeking waivers from perhaps process if that process is only applicable to this project. And none other. Does that make sense?
Understood. Okay. Anything else, board members? Oh, Mr. Parnell, so I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Anyone have a comment before they, I do that? Okay, hearing seen none, I know folks, thank you for your patience, um. A lot of material presented tonight, um, many of you have been coming to all these meetings, so. With that, the first person I see up is Karen McMaster.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
I'm McMaster, twenty-five and Han Street. Um, one question is, when you talk about four hundred trips, are you talking about just residents or does that include? Delivery trucks and everything else?
Uh. Mr. Thornton, you want to answer that?
Yeah, sure, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, that includes everything.
Everything. Okay, well, I don't find that accurate. All right, so. We've been doing this from day one, and I'm just gonna read so I stay on point, because it's late and I know you have a lot to do, so I'm just gonna read what I wrote. And, um, go from there. So from day one, the town council and, and the boards have not supported this project. From day one, the residents have been concerned for our neighborhood and the safety. Safety has been number one. And we have only. Grown in numbers since the process has begun. No one's dropped off of this, even in the summer. Signs were created, if you went down to Han Street and Broadway and North Ave, we created signs opposing and created awareness for all residents. Of Wakefield. I could easily have fifty more printed because people in Wakefield want to display. And they want to be heard about all the concerns we have for safety. Our neighborhood and our infrastructure cannot grow with this complex or the other complex proposed on the Han Street. We cannot make our road any bigger or expand our sidewalks anywhere on the Han Street. When the development team proposed forty B, they are continually spinning a tail using. Close proximity of community rail stating more residents will use bikes and walks. Bike lanes are a huge presence being added throughout towns, but there's no room on Han Street for a bike lane or for a cyclist to travel safely. So you're putting your own residents in jeopardy. Development teams have discredited our concerns by saying residents, what if things. Um, I say, we are living here and seeing it now. It will just continue to create more dangerous situations if these projects go through. The traffic study you present is based on three days, if I'm correct, in December. And that's all the law requires. Vehicle counts, average speed, document accidents, this is all part of your so-called study. What about the other three hundred and sixty-two days of the year? Unfortunately. As residents of Wakefield and the Han Street, we do not have the opportunity to present our findings. If we had. As the opportunity to present, we have plenty of proof. Supporting evidence, photos, videos, accounts from residents not just living on the Han Street, but through the whole town. So please do not discount our concerns and our intelligence. I have been very frustrated through this whole process and so has everybody. It just doesn't seem complete, it doesn't feel finished. There's so many loose ends. Um, all other be forty B proposals played out very differently in Wakefield for good reasons, because it's common sense. These structures do not belong here. All the logic reason experience in the world, just look at what you're trying to put in this neighborhood. You can't. Make it work and meet any of the extra mandates they're asking or working with us because it's too big. It's common sense. Honestly and ethically, the Hunt Street already has a high rate of concerns with, without these projects. We can't look in a crystal ball and see into the future, but we live here every day. We are the true account. And have more knowledge in this area than any stellar study or development team. Unless you're gonna live here, that's what I'd like to know, is anybody planning on moving in there and actually wanting to get in and out of there? We are not paid to be here each month. We can't request meeting day continuances, and yet we are still here. And as I have stated, we have grown in numbers. We have an interest in our homes and our community. My concerns are a mile high, not just traffic, not just soil testing, ledging, sadowing, lighting. It's basically, I don't trust any of this with any of the, the development team at all. Um, if these projects are built and their predict, and our predictions are correct, uh, uh, correct, there's no taking them down. I urge and plead with the zoning board to vote down both of these projects. I know that thirty-two Nahant Street has not came up, but. Our, our town of Wakefield, the town council needs to fight and stop both of these developments, even if it means going to litigation. I want to thank all the boards, all the individuals that have listened through, to me throughout the year. Um, Lieutenant Anderson, Mr. Lucy, all of you have done a great job, and I thank you for your patience dealing with us. And the residents in donating your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next up, I see a Mike, uh, Jurelio, sorry about the pronunciation.
That's okay, it's, uh, Jurelio, um, I live on twenty Wilson Road. Uh, with my wife, uh, and two daughters, um, so I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you as a concerned member of this community, deeply invested in preserving the unique character and quality life. Um, that makes Wakefield such a place to, a good place to live. The proposed construction presents a significant risk and some concerns that warrant careful consideration. Along the project that happened would enable the gross monetization of a mass housing loophole at the locals' expense. The scale of the development threatens to overwhelm the existing infrastructure. Our roads, schools, public services, uh, will be stretched thin. Adding such a large-scale project would exacerbate these issues, leading to increased traffic congestion in nearby school zones. Most importantly, the high school. The project poses substantial risk to our local environment and will certainly cause drainage issues. To the homes that abut the project, uh, several homes on Wilson Road. I actually live in twenty Wilson Road, right next to eighteen Wilson Road. Uh, but yes, many homes will be affected by this drainage complications that will certainly arise. In light of these concerns, I urge you to consider the long-term implications of this project on our community. Denying this construction proposal will be an affirmation of our commitment to preserving the integrity of Wakefield. Allowing this project promotes the gross monetization of a mass housing loophole. That future developers trying to enter Wakefield will make note of. I thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you, uh, next up on my screen is Chris Lagoff.
Hello, I'd like to thank everyone on the board and Lieutenant Anderson for their very intelligent, uh, contribution to this discussion. I live at thirty-eight Bennett Street. My closest cross street is Traverse. Um, therefore, I'm one street over from Nahant. Right now Bennett Street is already used as a shortcut for. The traffic that builds up at the corner of Nahant and Main Street, and this will only continue. Persons driving down our street, coming from, coming across from Nahant over Travis are generally driving at forty miles an hour. Our street used to be one-way. It is now two-way street with parking on both sides of the street. I typically, driving down the street, need to pull over to let another car pass. Because there is already so much congestion on this street. To speak to the traffic on Nahant Street, this morning at eight AM, I left for a doctor's appointment. I was stopped for the light. I was the fifteenth car back from the light when traffic resumed. I did not get through the traffic light. It became red again and I needed to wait. Today's the first day of school. Eight o'clock, school's already in session. I think the thought of having such a large development on a hot street is a disaster. Folks who live there will not be taking public transportation. That is a fifteen to twenty-minute walk to the bus stop. It's not convenient, it's not easy to cross the street. I think it's just going to cause more traffic. Not only will Traverse Street be used to cross over to Bennett to get down to Main Street. But it'll be used to go up Bennett and go down Melvin to get to Water Street and cause traffic congestion there. It's not a good plan, um, especially given that Nahant Street serves this, the high school. And, um, is so heavily trafficked already. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Paula Gardella.
Hi, everybody, um, again, I'm gonna say that the size of this structure being proposed in no way. Shape or form safely fits into this residential neighborhood of Nahant Street. All the input everybody has given regarding size reduction. And the reduction of the units has been completely ignored by the developer, as we all know. Simply put, the location cannot safely support the scope of the project. There are obvious major concerns arising from traffic alone, without even mentioning or getting into light spillage. Potential water and drainage issues, storm management issues, noise control issues, privacy issues. And an impact on the environment. We've said repeatedly, Nahant Street has no room to expand. It's already had many unfortunate accidents. It's a narrow winding road with no full sidewalks for pedestrians. It's a major route of travel for many abutting towns, and it's home to the town dump. One side, we've got an extending, expanding vocational and high school. And a, and a mid, uh, uh, elementary school. On the other side, we've got the Galvin. Plus a hundred residential units going in right at the corner of Main and Broadway. Where MG Fitness is currently located. Clearly, this project and the proposed one for thirty-two Nahant Street will pro- profoundly impact safely. Two hundred and fifty more cars entering, exiting the Han Street on a daily basis. Entering and exiting from these developments isn't an easy task. It's not meant for the faint of heart or those who lack any type of patience. Currently, it's scary just to exit Traverse Street. You're thinking about putting two more, huh, two hundred more people across the street? You're leaving virtually no room for error. There's far too many what-if opportunities for these structures to fail in terms of safety. Let's not make the grave mistake of intentionally ignoring the many what-ifs. Because with the what-ifs comes the very real possibility of serious life-threatening accidents. You can't take down this structure or the other one once they're up. Please consider this. Thank you so much, ZBA. Thank you, town of Wakefield. You're tremendous, and I appreciate all your hard work. We all do.
Thank you. Uh, next up on the screen is, uh, Ed Green. If I can write, remind folks to give me their address as well. It's important for the record.
Yeah, hello, I'm Ed Green, uh, two thirty-eight Main Street in Wakefield. I've done a little, uh, reading on this subject, uh, the handbook for zoning boards. And, uh, I, you know, something caught my eye. You know, I understand what it says here. The chapter forty B puts the regional need for low and moderate income housing. Ahead of the concerns that we're talking about, unless there's overwhelming evidence to the contrary. Now, I look at overwhelming evidence. Uh, safety is tonight's topic, you know, traffic. Uh, then there's the, uh, height of the building, the size of the building, uh. That's, uh, fitting with the neighborhood, the quality of life for the neighbors. Um, the lack of open space when it's done. I don't see anything but parking. Uh, and, uh, trash containment frequency and the, uh. Uh, the volume, just for trash for a hundred units, uh, packaging and delivery and storage was brought up. Matt Keating did a great job on that too, uh. You know, uh, snow storage, what are you gonna do with snow in the wintertime? Now you can haul it away, but, uh. Then you got more equipment coming in and out of there. So, uh, in venom, you know, the, uh. The density in this case directly impacts economic feasibility. Now, I know a return of total cost and net operating income are mentioned in there, but no. Uneconomic could be caused by a single factor. But no, uneconomic could be caused by a single factor or a combination of factors resulting in the loss. Uneconomic in this case, it I'm not saying, it doesn't mean that just because it's feasible with thirty units and it could be way more feasible with a hundred units, doesn't make it unfeasible at thirty units. So I I think that the size, there's gotta be a limit to what is reasonable and feasible. Um and one last thing, I heard someone just mention, the soil study. Thirty-five years ago, I worked in that white building, and it was a honing building. And we had barrels and barrels of honing fluids, hydraulic fluids, and degreasing fluids. Now, how they were handled thirty-five years ago, uh the south side of that building ought to be have a close look at the ground, at the ground quality. That's all I can say with that. But I would like to finish off with, there's gotta be a limit to what's reasonable and what's feasible. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next up, I see Maureen Neltin.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Maureen Neltin, one-hundred Nahant Street. Um so some comments I have, um based on some things that Lieutenant Anderson said, I'm kind of confused. He said no posted speed limit on the hunt. Why is there no posted speed limit? I mean, there are two twenty mile an hour, which I gather. Is that what the speed limit is? I thought you indicated there was no speed limit on the hunt. And that is clearly very frightening to me and probably the parents of anyone that has a child walking down that street to one of the three schools on the east end of the hunt. Um is Lieutenant, is Lieutenant still on?
I am, Mr. Chair, if you want me to address that.
You can just address that quick question, that'd be great.
Sure, the since it's a thickly settled zone, uh you would revert back to a thirty mile an hour zone. That's uh majority of streets in our town that don't have a uh what's called a special speed regulation. In order to have that, they typically, your your speeds are like twenty-five miles an hour, thirty miles an hour, forty-five miles an hour. Uh those would be done by a special speed study and approved by MAST DOT. The danger with that is sometimes um they could actually increase the speed limit if we uh if we do a special speed study and have them do a special speed regulation. So if you remember from Driver's Ed, uh anytime you're in a thickly uh thickly settled area, it's thirty miles an hour. Um on some roadways, we add additional um advisory signage to remind people of that. If you're outside of a thickly settled zone, it's forty miles an hour, divided highway, uh fifty miles an hour, and so on and so forth. So there is a speed limit. It's thirty miles an hour because it's a thickly settled zone.
But I mean, clearly, individuals are not traveling at thirty miles an hour. I mean, I don't have a speed gun on me, so I can't test it myself, but I I I'm guessing they're going upwards of forty miles an hour from what I can see out my window, or even when I walk down the street on the hunt. Um I especially with three schools at the end, it it clearly concerns me more than it normally would if there weren't three schools at the end of the street. Plus, the street is very curvy, as we all, you know, know that. And the sidewalks clearly leave a lot to be desired. They may be, might be redone at some point, but I don't think that's gonna happen for another couple of years. I mean, I just, I just wonder, I mean, why we don't have some speed signs on the street? Because motorists are going way in excess of thirty miles an hour. Again, I don't have a speed gun. But we just.
Maureen Neltin, I'm sorry to interrupt. If we could just kind of focus the testimony on the project. You know, you could take this up with Lieutenant Anderson or in the Traffic Advisory Committee. The later date, we gotta, we got a lot to get through. Let's so if we could focus on the application before us and the testimony and evidence that was presented tonight, that we appreciate it.
Sure, I and I will, I do agree with the issue of the sightlines coming out of this development. Um clearly, if someone's taking a left turn, I can't envision where that road curves. But I think it'll be very difficult, and I do hope and pray that no one ever has an accident there because I I'm not so sure the sightlines are so great taking a left-hand turn. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Oliveria.
Hi, Marie Olivera at uh two-sixteen Nahant Street. Um I just wanna uh reiterate a um few things. Uh I'm retired now, and um I'm at my front window quite a bit. And this is, this is a no-truck street for a reason. And um in spite of that, and for whatever reason, we have lots of DPW trucks coming from the dump every day. We have Verizon trucks up and down. We have Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light trucks up and down, uh which is all understandable, but to add more to that um with um all these delivery trucks. And again, living on this street, there is no um UPS truck, landscape truck, uh uh Amazon truck that pulls into anybody's driveway. They're halfway street and they're halfway sidewalk. So adding more apartments to this street is gonna make it even that much worse. Um also, um what I'd like to add, and somebody else touched upon this. Uh we, we have to look to the future and unintended consequences. The Volk School is, after that's built, adding six-hundred more students, which means more and more traffic up this street. They're also talking about a skating rink, which will be bring people from out of town for for hockey games. They're also intending to do a lot of night classes with a pool up there. And again, you know, more and more traffic on this street. And um uh and I think that's about all I have to say. Um really, like forty B, you never know where it's gonna take you. And putting this there, like Paula said, once it's there, you can't take it down. So um thank you very much, and I'm so impressed by the board and um the Traffic Committee and all you're doing to support the town in our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh next up, I see Annie Leary.
Hey, Tom, it's uh Matt Leary. I'm gonna jump in here, and we're eighty-three Nahant Street. We are uh abutters of this property. And focusing on the safety issue, uh I just wanna it's been mentioned a bunch of times about the the four different schools that are within, it seems like maybe half mile, mile of this development. And with the increased, you know, uh traffic and density of cars on the hot street, something I want to just point out is the with the amount of the population within a mile of this um development of these four different schools and the the number of like issues that are going on in schools, I just want to make sure there's good um accessibility for first responders to get to the four different schools and and we don't want something like this with its size and traffic to delay first responders at being able to get to a school when they need to in case of an emergency, God forbid. And I just think that's another element to the safety that I think is worth um some attention. So just that with the increased traffic on the hot street, it's one of the few um access points to these different schools, and you don't want to, again, delay a police cruiser from, you know, to get to a school that needs to get there quickly. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Um. Audra Bartz.
Hi, Audra Bartz. I'm at thirty-nine Nahant Street. Thank you so much for letting me uh pop in here. I also wanted to thank the board very much for including the public and their patience with all these meetings over the last, what, year and a half, two years. Um I just second all of the statements that have been made by, you know, my lovely neighbors here on Nahant Street. Um I can speak to, obviously, the traffic is in my front, right out my front door every day. My front wall has been hit by cars more than once. I've had to rebuild the front wall because of accidents in my front yard right out here. So that's without these additional one-hundred-and-twenty-six units. So clearly, all of the statements made um can't convince me that there won't be even more accidents, more traffic, more safety concerns. So that's just a repeat of what's been said. I also just would like to make a statement that um these developments are being uh proposed on the back of this forty B law. I would like to add to the dialogue that forty B is about affordable housing. I would bet that most of my peers here in this room or in this meeting would absolutely get behind adding more affordable housing. But if it was just about affordable housing, why not decrease the number of units being proposed and only do forty B? Only build twenty units, build twenty units that are for low-income housing. But that's not ever gonna be considered because what we all know is this is about profit. And that's never actually explicitly stated. This is about the profit and big money that's a few people want to make on these little properties. Um and so I just wanted to add that because while the profit goes up for these builders, it is decreasing the value of our properties. It will decrease the value of all of the people who live on this street already. Um and so I just think that is gross and um egregious, and I would like that to just be added to the to the notes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mike Solis.
Thank you. Uh school is back, and the traffic coming from backup, coming from Main Street extends way past my house and thirty-two Nahant Street. When I take a left out of the driveway, if someone lets me in, a third of my car is in that lane. I'm trying to go left there. And I think that would add to, uh I think Lieutenant Anderson was talking about the problems with um pulling in and out of driveways on the hot street. And certainly, it extends, extends all the way down to the to the curb, not just past thirty-two Nahant Street. Um coming home, I had to wait until traffic cleared to get in my driveway. And the uh traffic snow right now is worse with the school opening plus mid-afternoon, two-thirty-ish is also a big problem. And finally, my trash wasn't picked up today because of the traffic. And so hopefully, it'll come tomorrow if I can find the time. Thank you.
Can I just get your address?
Excuse me, twenty-six Nahant.
Thank you. Victoria Turner.
Victoria Turner, sixteen Wilson Road. I'll try to be brief. Uh I really appreciate Traffic Advisory Committee and the board and all the things they've done. I think I think the board and the committee have the number of what's going on here, which is minimizing safety and maximizing profit. Absolutely, every plan we have seen has been about reaching the minimum requirements for something, never considering going beyond it, except when it comes to the number of units. They have been completely unwilling to have any type of conversation about that, which is absolutely absurd. They have come unprepared. They have been unprofessional. They have been dishonest. I don't trust a single thing they say at this point after coming to all these meetings. It's this is a ridiculous proposal from people that do not care about what they're doing and cannot be bothered to be prepared. And I, I have a lot of faith that the board will vote this down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheryl Drews. Cheryl, you're on mute.
I need to unmute. There I go.
I get your addresses, please.
Two-seventy-two Nahant Street. My grandmother, my grandmother and father built this house, and it was a country lane with the poorhouse across the street. I've raised my family here, and my children went to the Franklin School down past these new projects that are being considered. They were supposed to walk to Franklin School, but I refused because of the traffic on the Han Street back thirty-four years ago. You can only imagine the increase of traffic and the speeding that goes on from the Volk, the high school, and everybody else. I think these projects are going to be way unsafe for us. And you, nobody's gonna bike, nobody's gonna walk. Today's school started, and yes, there were kids walking to school to the elementary, the high school, not the juvenile, in in the vocational school. But you know what? It's really not safe on the hot street. And so the project needs to be dumped. I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Conway, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thanks for having me. And uh thanks for uh listening to all of us. Um as far as, I live at eighteen Wilson Road. And going back to uh when I think I got the original hearing notice back in October eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three was the first time, I think, we was bespoke, the hearing notice that was sent out by your board. Um we've discussed the so, the density and the size to a degree. We've talked about um the street not being safe, which everybody that's spoken just prior to me that have said the no, the number of accidents, the pole split, there's a guardrail at sixty-two that's all got orange barrels now that that's still down. Um currently, where the proposed site is for the the hundred units, there's two ranch houses on either side of the driveway going into the old company, which was Precision Horning, Honing. Uh where I live, in the back of that, uh in the two ranch houses on either side of the driveway going into the old company, there may be six or maybe ten people living in those two ranch houses, which are gonna be coming down if this uh project goes through. And currently, there's not a lot of activity as far as cars and trucks going out of there. There are a lot of trucks in there, but a lot of them blow in the morning, and they're out. And the driveway doesn't get much use because it was two residential home, there's two residential homes there now. And like I said, the company, which is not being used. So now you turn that around, as we all know, and everybody stated, that now you turn this into a hundred units, and every unit's gonna have at least two, two or three people in it. There's gonna be three or four hundred people in there. We know about how many cars are gonna be there. Instead of having the one single driveway going in between the the build, uh the houses into the old company, we're gonna have two points of entry and uh one point of entry and exit on the uh south side of the building. And I talked about the line of sight. And I live off of uh on Wilson, off of Coolidge, and when you come out of Coolidge to go out onto the hot to make a left to go west on the hot street towards the junction as we know it. On a good day, you're coming up, up a grade, and you really have to look, and the line of sight is just not there in either direction. So that's on a good day today, for example. Now, we haven't even talked about it, and I've said this before, it's gonna snow sometime, and we're gonna get plowable snow on both sides of the road. The road is narrow now for cars. And if you get six, eight, ten inches a foot of snow, you got the snowbankings. Now, what it does is it brings the, it channelizes the road down, it brings it down even smaller. And so now you try to look left or right coming out of one of the Coolidge Road or even one of these proposed driveways or entrance points or exit points from the new building with the snowbankings, the line of sight is gonna be diminished even more. And currently, like I said, there's a very minimal amount of cars coming in and out of there. But now you increase it to a couple hundred car, two or three hundred trips a day. It's it, the the project is, like they said back in the OJ days with the, when they had the trial. The project is too big. It doesn't fit. The developer should resubmit. That's what, that's my comment for today.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other hands up. So about to close public comment, going once, twice, three, back to the board. Pleasure of the board. Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen Merdock raised her hand. Go ahead, Kathleen. You're on mute right now, though. Kathleen, you're on mute. Kathleen, you you have to unmute yourself if you're gonna talk.
I see your I see your hands going.
Kathleen, you need to unmute yourself if you're gonna talk.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. This is, I I'm, I live at um Body Herbert Street, which is off of Hart, which is directly off um coming up to Herbert Street. So we're just very concerned. We already, we're on a double dead end. There's only four little streets. We already have people coming up and getting lost. I can't imagine what's gonna go on, but my main concern that I wanted to bring up is how are we legally doing this with the group home that's next door? How are we not gonna put Garrett in danger who walks, walks to Shaw's? I don't understand how we are, we're, they're allowed to do that with a group home right next door. Aren't we putting them in danger also? Are we not, are we gonna meet requirements for the state for the group home? Has that been addressed at all?
Yeah, I don't think it's part of the purview within this board.
So it it doesn't matter um?
I'm not saying it doesn't matter. I'm just saying what we're looking at is very specific and, you know, part of an application that's before us, the zoning board.
Oh, okay. So under the zoning, that that's all we're looking at tonight to to decide whether we we can go forward or not? What would be the actual action to stop it? What is it that we have to do with everybody seen not wanting to go forward? We're just waiting on a vote? But and I apologize for being late to the table. I um was out of the state for a while last year, so I wasn't privy to all that's going on. So Karen's been very kind in trying and getting me updated, but I'm concerned with how do we stop it? What is the solution? If all the neighbors and the police and everybody saying this isn't what we want, what is our actual? What can we do? Where can we go from here?
Well, as a board, we're gonna hear all the evidence. We've been hearing evidence for the last almost year now.
Right.
And at the end of that process, we adjudicate the case. And we'll either uh approve it or um not approve it. So that's what happens at this board.
And do we know we have a timeframe of when you're gonna take the vote?
Uh, yes, right now we have to do it within there's a hundred and eighty day time period. That one hundred and eighty days is up next Wednesday, September eleventh.
Okay, and so will there be in a meeting to let us know or to to see?
Well, we got, I have to discuss it with my fellow board members right after we close public comment.
All right, well, I appreciate all that's being done. And again, I apologize for being so late to the game. But again, I'm concerned like everybody else for safety. Uh, my own son got in an accident on the Han Street. Luckily he was fine. But it's very dangerous even from us poking out from Hart, trying to take or right or left. And I'm I'm right in that corner, so I'm very concerned. But I appreciate, like I said, everything that's being done. And I have a good evening. Okay.
Thank you. All right, uh now back to the board. Pleasure of the board.
So, Mr. Chairman, it it seems to me that at this point, we've heard T A C, we've heard D P W, we've heard the neighbors were coming down to the hundred and eighty timeframe next Wednesday. Um, I don't think we can wait till next Wednesday to take a vote. I think, God forbid, there's a hurricane, something happens. Um, I'm ready to hear where others are at and I'm ready to make my statement, but but I, from a timetable standpoint, I think we need to vote tonight.
Yeah, barring, barring an extension, I agree. So anybody else on the matter? Yeah, I don't, I I strongly believe, which was one of the reasons we're having this meeting, we cannot wait having the hundred and eighty days come up on our our hearing on September eleventh. We cannot take that chance. So I'm I'm with you on that, Chip. Dave?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, again, it's been our experience, I think collectively with many of us as a board that, you know, we've approved many projects in town, forty B or not forty B, and and they almost always have some conditions. Um, but at the end of the day, through negotiation and compromise and finding common ground, the applicant still gets a viable project, right? Um, and the town retains some control uh with those conditions over the project construction and the future maintenance, right? So there's sort of a, you know, both parties, you know, go away with something, right? Um, but as we've heard and as everyone has said, you know, in this case, you know, we're at the end of the public hearing period, we're up against a deadline. Uh, we've heard all the evidence and it doesn't seem to be a practical way to move forward to approve this project with conditions. I just, I just don't see that as being a realistic path forward, given what we've heard, including tonight from the applicant and all the testimony. So that, kind of, that's where I'm at. I mean, it's you know, again, the the, you know, I went back through the the state statute and the, you know, the the Mass Handbook that we've given on how to handle forty Bs, right? I've been through all the notes. And it gives us guidance as a board, right? And we have approved other ones, as you know. Um, but in this particular case, given all that we've heard in the testimony and and the concerns that still exist, um I just don't foresee a way to move forward and approve this with conditions that that both sides gets, you know, something and the town gets some retention of control. Um, I just don't see that path. So that's kind of where I'm, you know, where I'm at. And I would add that if 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 the feeling of the other board members is is to deny, um, I would bring up um one other couple of points that I I read from the statute. There's the term local concern, right? It's defined in the statute. And that means the need to protect the health or safety of the occupants of a proposed project or of the residents of the municipality to protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings and municipal and regional planning or to preserve open spaces. Right? So there's a lot there, but it's, that's the definition of local concern. Right? So if if this board feels that there are valid safety, environmental design, open space or other local concern, which would potentially support a denial of a comprehensive permit such that the local concern outweighs the housing need, which is what their applicant is defending and saying there's a need and we should have all these waivers and grant what they're proposing. If we think there's evidence to support that the local concern outweighs that housing need, then there is grounds for denial. So that's kind of where I'm at, and that's sort of my my closing remarks on this one for now.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I go back to you know, the question that I asked, was he willing to look, was Mr. Panos willing to look at the number of units? And I've asked that question more than once, both in working group meetings and and whatnot, and the answer tonight was no. But even if he was, even if they were willing to engage in good, honest and open communication, I kind of feel like that the process would have to start all over again. Right? Because we just saw and listened to T A C. That's usually the first thing we do, and then we start in working groups, starting, coming down, bringing the numbers down. Everybody starts with the maximum they want. And in all the other forty Bs that we've done in town, all the other forty Bs, they've never gotten the 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 starting number and all the developer and their team have been willing, more than willing to work together uh in reducing the number, reducing the size, reducing the density and reducing the safety risks. The safety risks risks are huge here. Kids walking to school, driving on the hot street. Now, hot street's not a well-built street. It's a curvy street. It's not well sidewalk. Um, I have no problem, as my record in voting for forty Bs in the past, that's shown that housing is fine. It's great. Uh, we've we've all, we have never turned down a forty B. Uh, and we rarely turn down projects, actually. We work with developers, we work with the teams. I mean, the things that have been unique for me in this process is the developers have never been to a meeting. We've heard Mr. Panos speak, we've heard his team speak. I've never heard the owner speak. I've never, we asked for his records, we asked for his projects. We got them. When you look at the projects that he's done, he's he's never done a forty B and he's never done a housing project this size. It's been industrial, it's been some different things. But it's never been something this size. So I'm concerned, one is that the developer never really cared about Wakefield or cared about this neighborhood. And from a lack of willingness to look at the size, we still have circulation problems. You know, everything's to a minimum. We heard Lieutenant Anderson and our T A C, our our review consultants, our peer consultants that we have to go by saying that this is an extremely unsafe safe project. Yeah, we've we've had a little bit of design. We've asked for some design changes without reducing the size. And they've they've done that. They've they've cooperated there. But but this thing doesn't blend into the neighborhood. There there, this is the the largest uh, there's not many neighborhoods in town that it would blend into. And the hot street's a residential street. This is not Foundry. This is not Hopkins on the other side of one twenty-eight with a bunch of other buildings. This is one and two family homes trying to have a hundred units stuck in it. From the safety concerns that I've heard from the lack of design to have it be integrated into the neighborhood, I I can't get behind this project. That's where I stand.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
I'm with the board right now, Mr. Panos.
Okay.
Any other board members have anything to say?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, real quick, um I agree with everything that was said tonight. Um, you know, it's just, it's too close to the street, not enough parking, too many floors, um. You know, just the, this the unpreparedness, like everyone else said, and just just the willing, not even to to even entertain the hundred and eighty day thought, you know, I brought that. I think I brought that up a few months back and and he may have said, yeah, Mike, yeah, maybe we'll we'll talk about it, but it doesn't seem like he's gonna budge tonight. I mean, I just, let's just call a spade a spade and take a vote.
Mr. Chair, um, Mickey Feely, um, a couple of comments. One is, um, just so people know what forty B is. Um, there are um safe harbors for a town for something um where if they didn't want something like this, and you know, we don't have the ten percent affordable housing. So in a sense, uh, we have to look at this unless um, it's unsafe, is inconsistent with local needs, and that's in the C M R uh regulations. Um, and clearly, when we look at what's inconsistent with local needs, we look at first, um, our our first responders, and all of them have expressed concerns. Second, and probably even more importantly, the residents, they all have concerns and they live there. I dropped off my daughter this morning, the first day of school. This would horrify me to have kids walking down that street with extra traffic and and vehicles not being able to to service this building if there's ever a problem. Then I look at the T A C and I think of that last paragraph you read or that um that the the um Mr. Keely read that we all read and we knew what was coming, but it basically says this, and we do not support this project because it's not safe. That's what it says. Maybe not a quote, but that's the that's the gist. All of that says, um you know, we have a developer and an attorney here who has basically been saying, yeah, but this is what we're gonna do and relying upon, you don't have ten percent yet, we're gonna ram this down your throat. If that were the, if that were how this works, then you could build a hundred-story building. But even this building, this building's massive, too big, unsafe, and it shouldn't be here. And um I know what my vote's going to be, and it's not gonna be a positive.
Okay, thank you, Mickey. I I would agree with everything that's said. I don't know how um I could ever vote for something, given the T A C memo, when our public safety experts have told us that it's unsafe. And the unsafeness is not just the sightline and not just the driveway. It's based on the density, if you read the T A C memo. So it it does relate to the size of the project as it's laid out. You know, so we, the safety is the number one major concern that I have. Secondly, that, you know, I think Dave did a good job of that local concern fitting into the neighborhood. You know, if you read all the forty B booklets that we have, it has to fit into the context of the neighborhood. This project does not. And uh despite our repeated attempts to try to have that conversation, um, we've been denied that conversation. So um, there's a couple minor things when I look at the state eligibility letter um that the applicant, you know, the state lays out what the applicant should do in this process. In my opinion, they haven't met them all. That's another reason um that I think um this application is deficient. And it it's been frustrating for me that when the T A C laid out the memo with serious safety concerns, no substantive changes were made to the project. They brought in people to try to explain away our concerns as opposed to seriously addressing them. So, um I think we do have to vote tonight if we don't get an extension because I don't as others said, I don't see a path forward if we're not gonna really discuss density, but that's where my head's at with the board too. Mr. Panos, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, uh.
Can you come on to the camera? Be hel- it'd be helpful to see you.
I'm sorry, um, we have this owl thing in front of us and
There you go, thank you.
You haven't seen enough of me? Um I do not have the authority to give an extension tonight, but what I'm willing, and I did, I wanna make it clear, I did not foreclose uh redesign considerations that may or may not include a density reduction. Uh, what I, what I would uh suggest is over the next couple of days that uh we explore a path forward and on September eleventh, which is your next hearing, uh explore the feasibility of what an extension might look like. What do you have in mind for an extension? I I I just don't wanna blindly give one um without exploring a path forward. And to see if that path forward is revotally feasible uh in light of a redesign. Uh, as I said, we're we're open to it. I I indicated to Mr. Tarbell that we weren't foreclosing that discussion. But give me a little guidance. What what's an extension look like right now?
I'm I'm not gonna, I'm telling you right now, I'm not in my opinion, and I'm going to, I think you've heard a lot of the board members mention this, we cannot have the last day of the hundred and eighty days beyond our hearing. Just too many things can happen. Can be a blackout, can be a hurricane, can be a a a number of different things, and that has happened to us. Not that we've missed a deadline, but we've had to miss a meeting because of circumstances beyond our control based on, you know, the current format of Zoom. So I I don't think without an extension past September eleventh, I'm gonna urge my board, fellow board members to take a vote tonight. So if you're not willing to extend past September eleventh, I don't see a path forward for us, uh.
So just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, uh, an extension to allow for that discussion?
Right, it it would depend, a lot depends on you, Mr. Panos, right? What kind of, you know, discussion? How deep are you willing to go into this project? You know, it it's, you've heard loud and clear for the la- almost since December, the board's concerns, and they've been very consistent. And they've been very aligned with both the Traffic Advisory Committee's memo that came out recently and with the neighbors. And they've been very aligned with both the Traffic Advisory Committee's memo that came out recently and what the neighbors have told you. I mean, you've heard it. I I don't understand why you. You know what we want and you know what we've asked you for. So it's it's depending willingness and how are you really really willing to work with us? On all the concerns that you've heard.
I'm willing to uh advance a two week extension to allow for that discussion to play out. Is that acceptable? I'm sure I could convince my clients. I do not have the authority, but I'm sure I could convince them. That it's worthwhile. We would rather take care of this, to be clear, on the local level. We do not necessarily want to take this to the Housing Appeals Committee and duke it out there. We'd rather do it here.
Well, with all due respect, I haven't. I I I agree, but but we've been asking for that since December. And we've been.
For some input. Is. I'm happy with the two week extension, but they've gotta know that we're looking for some significant. Significant. Changes and significant size reduction. So like, I I'm not setting the number, nor do I ever want to do that. But for the amount of parking. For the sightlines. You know, it may be a significant. In my opinion. A significant, not. Total redesign. But a significant change in what the project will look looks like. In my opinion. To make me sway. My vote. I don't know where others stand.
Uh uh and as I said, I. I've seen that traffic advisor, safety is the number one concern. And right now. Our public safety experts have said, as constituted, your project's not safe. So. I don't see how any, you know, I can only speak myself, but I can't imagine, I don't see how any member of this board could vote for it.
Well, and what is two weeks by us, Mister Chair? No, unless they're seriously. Willing to have that conversation, as Mister Tarbell said. And really think about what it would take to mitigate these safety concerns. And not just explain and rationalize and try to dance around what's obvious to everybody. But if they're really willing to do it. Then 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 let's talk, but otherwise, what's the point? What's the point of of dragging this out two more weeks?
If if I did, Mister Chair, my my.
Hold on one second, Mister Panos, look Mister Feely speak please.
Another option is this, um, in that, you know, we basically asked them to redesign it the whole, every meeting, um. And have been met. I I I think with. Various um. Degrees of not answering it. Um, but one thing is, hey, we're gonna probably, if we vote on it tonight, which we're probably about to. You can withdraw. Start over again with a more um appropriate pro- proposal that doesn't waste. There's only fifty three people online, but uh now, but there's hundreds of people that have been on this, these Zoom calls. That doesn't waste our time with it with this sort of talk. We just had. Not eight months, excuse me. Al- almost a hundred and eighty days. Of dancing around, getting stuff late. Engineers not being here, engineers quitting. And then on two days before, this is a special meeting, by the way. This was gonna happen, you wanted us to go to the eleventh. The last possible day where we were. Where we were stuck either yes or no. What's the answer for? We had a special meeting. Just so we could talk about this and get this done tonight. So if this was some sort of, um, let's see how far to the edge we can take before we realize they're really not gonna vote for it. Were there? So I I would I would suggest withdrawing the entire project and starting again.
Also, Mister Chair, I don't, I don't know what two weeks gives us, because if we still miss next week's meeting, then we're not within another week of meeting. We need another month, I think. Just in case we do.
I mean, it it would it would have to be a whole new building.
It's the eleventh and then I believe the twenty fifth.
Um, just if I may, just to answer uh Mister Feely's question. It procedurally, it makes absolutely no sense to withdraw and start. Start over again.
You're correct, we could vote tonight and then we could go through litigation afterwards.
It's not a zero sum game like that. It just procedurally does not make sense. It does not make sense to start over. We can have that earnest discussion of redesign. And and I don't wanna put parameters, that's the thing. I don't wanna put parameters on what that redesign looks like because. We have a full design team that's very capable and very talented. That can come up potentially with something. That might meet at a middle ground. I don't know what that looks like right now.
Right, but that's something, that's something's entirely different than this project. Looks different, it'll be made out of different materials, it'll be smaller, larger, I don't know. But it's not the project we have in front of us.
I I apologize. When is your next meeting?
The eleven, the last day.
After the eleven, after the eleven.
The twenty fifth.
Let's get, let it get back to the chair.
It's September twenty fifth.
Thank you. So that's that's three weeks from now, um. Yeah, that's three weeks from now. So. That gives us enough time to kind of reevaluate, take stock, look at the redesign and have have a discussion.
I I'm not gonna have the deadline. Be the last night of a hearing. For the same reasons I've outlined here, so extending it to September twenty fifth just puts us in the same spot that we're in right now. Dealing with the September eleventh deadline. So unless you went out well beyond September twenty fifth. Then it's it's to Joe's point, it, where are we going, right?
And where have we been the last nine months? Only now, at the very end, or at the eleventh hour. When it's up against a vote that you. Perceive where this is perhaps going. You're willing to start to talk about what we've been asking for for nine months? Are you kidding me? Mister Chair, come on. I just.
If I can chime in. When when Chip, when Chip asked Mister Panos two hours ago. If he's willing to talk about reduction on density, he clearly say no. But now we are talking about boarding it down and all of a sudden. He's willing to talk about it. It it just, it's too late.
That's not true.
You you did clearly say no, he didn't wanna do the dense reduction. Two hours ago.
What I said was I was open to a further discussion of redesign. That's what I said.
Okay, let's. Let's. Stop. That back and forth. So. Board members. Do you wanna go forward tonight? Do you want to ask him for an extension?
I think you need an extension greater than September twenty fifth. And I think they need to hear. That it needs to be a significant reduction. And then I think if they come back on September twenty fifth. With a significant reduction. Then we can figure out a timetable that it will take. To do what we normally do. Look at. The design, look at. The materials, look at the lighting. I mean, I think civil's been done. You know, they may have to change some parking lots, but they've got all their cals. Um, so if they if they come back, you know, if we. In my opinion. You know, yeah, we've been asking for this for a long time, but we're we're not. I I I I think we would be shooting ourselves in the foot. If they said they were willing to to talk about a reduction in in numbers and not give them a chance to do that. I don't want a hundred units on this project. I don't think a hundred units makes sense. I don't think a hundred units, but if they're, if they come back on the twenty fifth and say. Hey, we got it down to ninety units, and I don't know what the number for the word significant means. Until. Somebody tells me what they're thinking about, or they show me some blocks. Of what an unsquare building looks like and how we can get more parking than we we have and. That type of thing, so I don't think they can pull that together by September eleventh, given that today is Thursday. So I think they could probably understand the parameters with his. Um. With his developer. To understand the parameters that he has to would work within. And then on the twenty fifth, we can figure out whether that's significant or not. And if it's not. We can say, okay. We heard it, we're not there. And if it is, we can say, okay, we're gonna need. Three more months to vet everything. I don't know.
With P P W Traffic Advisory, all our town experts.
Would have to go, would have to go through it again.
We have to vet it again.
Correct.
So.
Cause that's where this is all coming from, all the safety's coming from them, yes.
Yeah, so if it's not signi- if we don't deem it significant on the twenty fifth. Then we can say, okay, we heard him. They came back with something. We don't think it's enough and move forward. If we think we're working in the right direction. Or we feel that there's some give and take to come. Then we can continue it. But a significant continuance. That's that's where I'm at. I I. Or we can. Close the hearing tonight. Is the other option. And vote on what's been presented to us. And let it play out. Not in our own terms. I'd rather play out in our terms.
There is some value.
If it's possible.
There is some value to to settling this at the local level. Um.
Do I want six more months of this? No. But you end up with a real project at the end that's doable and safe. And fits into the neighborhood. Then maybe it's worth it.
So if I can understand, uh, you Mister Chair and and the Senator of the Board. Is it that you don't want the end of the hundred and eighty day period as extended to fall on a regularly scheduled meeting? That you would rather have that meeting plus. A few days.
Few days. Enough days to re-advertise a. Public meeting properly with a proper notice. In case we were unable to meet the night of the originally scheduled hearing. Which probably means. You know, into October. Because we've got to notice out, and and you well know the the requirements that we need to do for. Properly noticing a public meeting. We just can't have. The meeting and the deadline be on the same day.
I got it. Uh, so how about October second? That gives us almost a month from today. And two intervening hearings.
Do you think you'd be thinking come back on the eleventh? Some thoughts?
I can give you thoughts. I I I'd like to have, it's not uncommon to have a sideline working discussion. We can probably. Give you some thoughts. In. How this might move forward, not procedurally, but substantively. And. Play it out in a discussion. And I think a month gives us enough time to have that fully vetted discussion.
Members of the board, what? October second.
We have a working, we have a working group set up.
Right.
Right.
I'm I'm fine with it, Mister Chair. I mean, if he comes back next week with something and then. Gives us something a little bit more than the next meeting, I mean. You know, and then we can talk about extended again, like, I mean, we've done this millions of times, but we extend it two, three months at a time. I mean, this is not, and this is. This is not the norm, but. Other forty Bs that I've been a part of, it's every, when we're getting two, two months out, he, we add two more months. And then we get close again, and we add two more months, then we get close again, and it's the same thing over and over again. I've never seen it going down to the eleventh hour like this, but.
We've done it when it progress was being made and we were working towards a common goal. And 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 both sides are acting in good faith and we're and we're working towards something. If it's just discussion, then. I don't, I don't, where we go with it, but if there's substantive discussion that will address the public safety concerns that have been well documented. Then I'm I'm open to it a continuous Mister Chair. Or an extension, I would say maybe even October fourth, the end of the week, just to round it out and give us a little more breathing room.
How about to our first meeting in October?
Again, don't want it on a meeting date, but either way, it's just breathing room for a couple of meetings. I don't know what they're gonna come back with next Wednesday. Right, prob- probably very little, it's more likely in in the twenty fifth. You know, with an intervening. Subcommittee meeting, right, to discuss some things. That it'll be a more of a substantial discussion about where this thing is potentially headed. But again, if we determine on that night, it's still kind of chugging along and not. Going where we think it needs to go. To get that safety stuff, um, you know, mitigated in some way. Then we're right where we are tonight, so only if there's a commitment to really. Work with this board. And start having that serious discussion that we've been asking for all along.
That, I I agree, and we, and if we're not getting it, we can act on the twenty fifth. We can, so Miss Mickey, you were gonna say something?
Oh, no.
No, okay, so Mister Panos, are you okay with the fourth?
Yeah. I think I can convince the team to do that.
Well, no, we need to know.
No, I'm 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 telling you that I believe that tonight I can commit to it and. And have aside, have a conversation with clients and so forth. Yes, the four.
Yeah, Mi- Mickey.
Yeah.
Is that, is that verbal commitment? Tonight, good enough?
No, no, I'll back it up with a written agreement.
Yeah, um, we're gonna need.
Before the next meeting.
We're gonna, we're gonna. Tomorrow, we need it in our hand that says it's extended. Cause we're in the notification periods, we're into. A lot of things and we got till Wednesday. If, let's say nothing happens, we don't get a letter. Or some sort of formal extension. And we're just doing a handshake tonight. And it comes Wednesday and there's nothing more than that, it's over, you win. That you build thi- this project.
It's not gonna be a handshake, it has to be in writing and it will be in writing.
So Mister Chair, we've always voted at the meeting to extend, to accept the applicant's request for an extension. We do it at the meeting and it's followed up with a letter, right? So we need to do that vote tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, then it follows up with a letter to make it official.
Yes. And I will send you that letter tomorrow, that's fine.
Okay.
Mickey, you think that's all right? Cause I don't want to meet on the eleventh without a letter.
We have done these, we have done these extensions by motion, but you know, let's say they're done by. Say another developer, they were followed up immediately, but if we don't have a letter tomorrow, I don't, I don't think we can. Um, we can extend.
And I'll clock that in with the town clerk or something.
Okay, thank you, Gil.
I mean, if we weren't meeting ver- virtually, I would handwrite something right now, but.
Well, if the if the developer was here, maybe we wouldn't have to worry about this.
You need a letter in writing. To indicate our agreement. And I will give that to you. Tomorrow.
Right, I.
To October fourth.
I just remember, remember Mister Panos that Town Hall closes by at noon.
Okay.
That's sorry, but just, just F Y I.
Are are board members comfortable with that?
I am.
I am, yeah.
Yes, we've been taking these votes, I mean, my notes show that we've extended this already a few times, we've done it at these meetings and followed up with a note.
I know, but what what we've we've taken that vote with Mister Panos. Prior to the hearing has sent us a letter.
Right, we haven't been up against the deadline, but.
Right.
I I'm I'm comfortable that this is being done in good faith and.
Yeah.
We'll be okay.
So we have your word, Mister Panos.
You do.
As a member of the bar.
As a member of the bar and.
And then record it.
And 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 it is recorded and then despite what you otherwise may think, I do have respect for this board. I too was a chair for ten years. I too was a chair for ten years of the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, yes, you will have the letter. It, just a procedural question, do you guys re-advertise your hearings every, every two weeks? Or do you just announce the continuances and leave it at that?
No, it's just an agenda gets put out seventy-two hours.
Got it, you just post. Got it.
So, Mr. Chair, so are we voting to continue to the eleventh? Just to keep and see what could be discussed at that evening and extending to October fourth? Or are we continuing this to September twenty?
I think you'd make a motion, Dave, that continues it to. Continue the matter to September eleventh with the understanding that the Mr. Panos has promised a letter for a continuance to October fourth.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're in agreement that we're actually continuing to next week. I don't know what will change between now and then, but we'll see, and it's on the agenda, right? Okay.
Well, I, I guess I'd go back to you, Mr. Panos, and do you wanna? You wanna? Wait and have a working group meeting and kind of present. Your thoughts on the twenty fifth, or do you wanna come on the eleven?
So.
Working day.
If you, if you continue to the eleventh, I'm just going to be here as a, as a pro forma matter. And I will not bring any member of the development team. Um, I do think it's worthwhile. To, you know, just to, just to make sure if you have any questions about the continuance and that type of thing. Uh, I do think it might make sense, and I don't know if it has to happen here or offline. Uh, when would you propose? Maybe a, a sub, would you propose a subcommittee to review whatever concept we might come up with?
Yeah, I think that's the thing, but I can't schedule that now, I have to get my work scheduled. But Chip, I don't, I think we have to continue to the eleventh, because although.
I'm, I'm good with that, yeah.
I was gonna say, we, we have the promise, but we don't have the letter.
No, no problem, so if we had to, we could vote on the eleven, if we had to. Yeah, okay, got it. Thanks, I was missing that little piece of it all.
So you are going to get your letter, uh, what do you expect is gonna happen on the eleventh? You're just gonna gavel it in and?
Right.
Vote the continuance the twenty fifth?
With your letter, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And if you have some update, you know, we'll give you. We'll give you time at the microphone.
Okay.
All right, ready, Mr. Chair?
I think we're ready for a mo- finally ready for a motion, Mr. Hatfield.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this matter. To our September eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting. And accept the applicant's agreement to extend the public hearing. Um, to October fourth, twenty twenty-four, with a letter to follow. Um, to make that official, but, uh, that's my motion that we continue and extend at this time.
Seconded.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? Guaranteeing none, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, matters continue to the eleventh, we will see you on the eleventh, I'll probably be in touch prior to that. Uh, try to pick out the date that works for Chip and I as the subcommittee to get together with you.
My online is open.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good night, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Do folks need a sixty-second break?
I was gonna say, if we were in person like the old days, Tom, we'd take five.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I need more than, I'm sixty-seven, I need more than sixty seconds.
All right, we're gonna go into a two-minute recess, you got a hundred and twenty-two, it's getting late.
I know.
It's not okay to say that, oh, maybe, maybe one in sixty seconds there.
Back, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, Joe isn't, didn't see Mickey yet either, so.
I don't know if we needed a motion for that, but.
I couldn't wait.
Yeah.
Okay. Just waiting on Mickey and, uh. And Kasumi. Right, there's Mickey, just waiting on Kasumi. Oh, there she is. All set, okay, board's back in session. Um, moving on to the case, uh, for the comprehensive permit application at thirty-two Nahad Street. Uh, I see Mr. Haverty's here. Mr. Thornton remains. See Lieutenant Anderson, okay, so, welcome, Mr. Haverty. I think, uh, what we'd like to do is start with the traffic. Uh, and have Lieutenant Anderson and Matt Keeley. Uh, present first, uh, you'll be given an opportunity, your board, board will ask, uh. Questions or have comments, then you'll get, uh, an opportunity to respond, I know you submitted a memo, your team. Uh, in response to the TAC memo. So Lieutenant Anderson, if it's all right with you, I'll turn it over to you and Matt.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair. So for thirty-two Nahad Street, uh, we have a memo that was submitted to you dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the site plan had been modified since the original presentation. Uh, currently proposed to be a twenty-four multifamily residential units. With access provided by a single driveway on the hot street east of Maine and North Avenue. Uh, some of the concerns raised at the TAC meeting include parking, uh, based on the latest site plan, a total of forty-two parking spaces are provided. Four visitor spaces, two handicap, two electric vehicle charging stations. Uh, and a designated delivery space. Uh, for reference, thirty-six spaces would be required into zoning. The TAC appreciates the modifications that have been made to the plan, uh, including designated delivery of visitor spaces. But, uh, we still do have concerns that delivery drivers may choose to park on the hot street. As was, uh, echoed by our, uh, resident public participation. Uh, they expressed a lot of concern about Amazon delivery drivers, Uber Eats, um, and the like, uh, parking. On the, uh, what would be a sidewalk, um, in that area. Um, that creates a dangerous situation, Mr. Chair, it's, uh, it's just before, uh, the junction of Main. Uh, North Avenue Hut that we spoke about on the previous agenda items, uh, for the residences at, uh, the Hut. And, uh, there's a lot of traffic queuing in that area. So one illegally parked vehicle, even temporarily illegally parked, uh, would create. Uh, a dangerous situation or, you know, exacerbate an existing, uh, dangerous situation of, uh, of congestion in that area. So that's some of our concern with the parking, they do provide, uh, you know. In, in maybe another neighborhood that isn't as unique as the hot street, they may provide, uh, you know. A, a fair amount of parking and they did, uh, you know, do their best to, uh, to include things such as charging stations, handicap spaces. Uh, delivery spaces, but, uh, because of the proximity to that intersection, it's a, it's a concern. Uh, available site distance, we talked a lot about, just as we did with, uh, the, uh, previous agenda item, um. To be honest, we look at site distances on, uh, everything, uh, that comes before us at TAC, it's, uh. It's really a good indicator of, um, of where you're likely to have traffic crashes. A lot of our, our crashes that we respond to that are of any significance, they occur at an intersection. Uh, so we looked at that, uh. They had, uh, some plantings taller than three feet, uh, landscaping's been revised, uh, to show the. Plantings won't, uh, obstruct sightlines, which is a positive, uh, they demonstrate, uh, this adequate stopping distance. And intersection site distance at the driveway, so that is a positive. Uh, delivery vehicles, this is a concern that was raised by several of TAC members, um, and from the neighborhood, um, related to. Delivery vehicles on the hot street, up on the sidewalk or completely obstructing the travel lane. Uh, either way would reduce the available roadway width of the hot street. If a vehicle chooses to park on the street and impedes two-way traffic flow. Uh, if a vehicle chooses not to use its designated delivery space, or space is already taken, which is. Um, as we all know, Amazon, UPS, FedEx. They're all coming to your house multiple times, uh, throughout the day and your neighbors, so it's, it is, uh, a, a real possibility that that delivery space would be taken. Uh, during those peak hours, where are they gonna go? Probably back out onto the hot street, so that's a concern there for us, uh. Snow storage questions were raised at the TAC meeting regarding, uh, the adequacy of the snow storage, uh, areas on site. Uh, obviously, if, uh, snow storage is inadequate, it could impact the number of available parking spaces. Uh, snow in general, especially in tight parking lots, uh, can really hamper the availability of parking. Uh, this could also impact the hot street, uh, drivers circulating around site and can't find parking. So, uh, as a condition, the proponents should commit to taking excess, uh, snow off-site, uh, if needed to maintain the full use of the parking lot. Uh, access and circulation for emergency vehicles, something else that we look at, uh, while the proposed site layout allows for a fire truck, uh, to access. To the side or rear of the building, there isn't sufficient space for a fire truck to turn around within the site. Uh, the fire chief was concerned about the proposed site layout and, uh, their availability to navigate the site with an engine. Fire trucks that enter the site, we need to back out of the site driveway onto the hot street, this could result in the need for a lot of trucks to park on the street. And as we spoke about, uh, in the previous agenda item and with this. Uh, that would create a, uh, an unsafe situation there, uh, especially being closer to the intersection. We'll talk a little bit more about the intersection in a second. Uh, each of these calls. Uh. Specifically medical aid calls, which are our most frequent calls as an emergency service, police, fire, any of us, are your standard medical aid call. Uh, and, uh, they, they all come with a fire truck ambulance and a police car to, uh, majority of those calls. Uh, that's our typical response. You have, you know, over twenty units, you've increased the amount of, uh, medical aid calls, uh. By that many in that specific area, so it creates a, uh. Creates a lot of trip generation for those three emergency vehicles, all of which are gonna clog up an already congested spot. I believe I did talk about this in the, uh, previous agenda item, but when we did, uh, discuss, uh, this proposed development. I pulled up a Google Maps, uh, street view and, uh. It was right in front of the proposed driveway was the traffic queuing at that time, and that was just a random, uh, date and time that Google Maps was out, so. Uh, there is traffic queuing there, we've, we heard, uh. Uh, we had, heard it in public participation, uh, at the TAC meetings, uh, Mr. Chair you were part of, and, uh. You know, we, we heard it here tonight as well, uh, you know, this is no different, just because it's on the other end of, uh, the hot street. Uh, the, the queuing creates, uh, creates an issue. Uh, next, traffic area, uh, traffic study area operations, uh, at all the TAC meetings, there were numerous comments made about the overall traffic operations along the hot street. And at several intersections, the most notable, as we spoke about, was the junction, the hot street, Main Street and North Avenue. Uh, the traffic impact assessment that we received shows that this intersection currently operates at a level of service C during the weekday morning. And, uh, weekday evening peak hours, it's expected to operate at a level of service D under the future. No build and build conditions, uh, while the project is not expected to have a significant impact on intersectional operations. Comments were made, uh, that the existing operations of this intersection impact travel on the hot street of particular concern. Uh, are the vehicle queues on the hot street westbound? The traffic impact assessment shows that under build conditions, the westbound, uh, vehicle queues will back up past the site driveway. Comments were received, uh, at the TAC meetings that the, uh, vehicle queues currently back up past the site driveway. This condition would impact site access, as some of the residents that are on the, uh, lower number side of the hot street spoke about. On the previous agenda item that they basically have to sit there and wait to take a turn into the driveway. And, uh, that in turn, uh, creates more queuing and, uh, more dangerous situation for the intersection behind them. While they're stopped waiting to pull into their own driveway. These are residents of single-family, uh, homes that, uh, that were before you for public comment and, uh. Now there would be, um, the trip generation, uh, that was caused by, uh, an increase of twenty-four units here. Public safety, based on the mass DOT crash data from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, the, uh, traffic impact assessment shows. That another study area and sections experienced a crash rate higher than the district for average, we spoke a little bit about that before. Over as part of discussions, uh, at the April fifth, twenty twenty-four TAC meeting, uh. Representatives from the town of Wakefield and residents raised several concerns about the safety of the hot street, crash frequency. Uh, and the severity, uh, which may not be captured or accurately represented in the, uh, mass DOT crash data. In addition, while the speed study provided in the traffic impact assessment shows an eighty-five percentile speed of twenty-nine miles an hour eastbound. And twenty-six miles an hour westbound, uh, queues on the hot street, especially in that area during peak hours could skew that, uh, data point to the low side. So, you know, I believe these, uh. This traffic impact assessment was, uh. Was done, uh, in December, uh, you know, it's, it's a different type of, uh. Type of traffic at that time and, uh, you know, even though they, they did give us a good data set to look at. You see different, uh, different traffic, uh, volumes and, uh, speeds throughout the year, so. Uh, it can't necessarily, that snapshot can't accurately represent what we've heard through the testimony of our residents, uh, and our first responders. Said, uh, that were at the TAC meetings, uh. I did work with Scott Thornton, he was, uh, excellent with, uh, kind of breaking down the, uh. The roadway, we did it by kind of quarter-mile, uh, segments to, uh, kind of take a look at where the crashes, uh, were happening. Uh. So we did go through some of those, uh. We talked about a, a few conditions, uh, that, uh, were discussed and, uh. Could be exacerbated by the addition of twenty-four residences and would impact the overall safety of the area, so most notably was illegal parking. There's not even a side street really there to, to park on, so it would have to be, uh, really on the sidewalk or the side of the road. Uh, delivery vehicles, that's a, uh, a serious concern there. The vehicle speeds specifically off peak hours, that's when we see our highest speeds and the, uh, traffic impact assessment shows some speeds that are. Uh, much greater than thirty-five miles an hour, that may not be the eighty-five percentile, but there, there was a significant data set there that, uh, pointed to. Uh, speeds that were thirty-five and forty miles an hour. Uh, vehicle queues, uh, from the intersection, uh, of Nahad Street and Main North Ave. Uh, fire truck access and maneuvering around the site was an important consideration that, uh, I don't believe they have. Uh, and obviously the frequent medical calls that would, uh, block Nahad Street. As it exists right now, that's a neighborhood of, uh, primarily single-family homes, uh, maybe some duplexes, but, uh. Certainly there wouldn't be, uh, the increase of, uh, twenty-four residences that would, uh, cause our first responders to. cause our first responders to uh be there much more frequently than any one-off residents on the Hut Street. Uh these condi- conditions exist along the Hut Street today and have been raised as concerns by uh members of the T A C and the neighbors in the area. Any condition that results in additional blockage of the Hut Street in particular uh is concerning. The T A C feels cumulatively cumulatively that these conditions will likely result in a negative impact on the safety of the area. I think that uh as you know, this is the uh this is the shorter end of the Hut Street. It's tight. There's a lot of traffic queuing. There's a lot of congestion. Uh there's a lot of people trying to navigate that intersection. This is really the uh this is the lead-up to a uh a very busy intersection in town and uh it's going to uh it's gonna get even busier with some other developments in the area. So uh in summary, those are our concerns and uh I'll turn it over to Matt to uh hit any points that I may have missed, but uh in general, that's uh that's a good summary of our uh our memo too.
Yep, I think you covered it all, Lieutenant. Thank you.
But if you guys could uh like you did with the last one, there's usually a summary statement at the end. A lot of the neighbors haven't seen it. I know the board members have, but if you could uh read that as well.
So that, Mr. Chair, that was the last uh little bit that I read there, that basically uh the addition of twenty-four residences would impact overall safety in the area, illegal parking, uh delivery vehicles, vehicle speeds, particularly in off-peak hours, the vehicle queues from the intersection of the Hut, Main and North Avenue, fire truck access and maneuvering around the site, the frequent medical calls uh blocking the Hut Street. And uh that basically these uh these conditions uh result in additional blockage of the Hut Street and it's uh concerning to members of T A C because it could uh result in a negative impact on safety.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, member of the board, members of the board, any questions or comments? Okay.
Mr. Chair, nope, sorry, just coming up. So again, I just want to add, like I did with the previous one, again, according to my notes in addition to the the sightlines and the um and the queuing and all all the rest that uh Lieutenant Anderson pointed out. Uh again, it's been reduced to twenty-four units, but there's still um you know, according to the trip generation, hundred and forty-six trips, right? For on average daily. So again, you got a hundred and forty-six cars over the course of the day going in and out of the site um pretty close to that intersection. So it's a smaller project than the other one that we just discussed, but it's closer to that set of lights and and with the unique circumstances that Lieutenant Anderson pointed out about the street. And you got, again, a lot of um activity going in and out of the site uh cumulatively throughout the day. It's just, it's a big number for for even uh you know, a smaller project of this compared to the other one. I just wanted to point that out for everyone's benefit. Thank you. Yep.
Anybody else? Okay.
Sorry, it took me a second to get off of you. Yeah, I I think um you know, again, we're talking about a small site, right? We're talking about a fire truck that has to get in there, can't turn around, a a three-car, uh an ambulance, a police car and a fire truck responding to one in the twenty-four units can't pull in, we're blocking near an intersection. I mean, again, uh i- it they're safe, i- it's not a safe situation where we're trying to shoehorn too much in on a small, small lot. We have no, it's not fitting into the neighborhood. It doesn't blend into the neighborhood. We're talking about twenty-four units in a one-to-two family neighborhood, small street, near a busy intersection that's already uh a P midday and D at night uh or in the morning. I mean, I it's unsafe. We have kids, we're that you're that much closer to the galvan. There's that many more walkers and bikers and now we are adding delivery trucks. Um I think we're just trying to do too much on a small space with all our peer review is coming back at these are unsafe conditions and and I don't think we can have developments that are unsafe. Doesn't make sense to me.
No, agree. Anytime you go down that street, the the queues will be on this site from the uh junction intersection certain times a day. They extend beyond the site already. So anyone take trying to take a lift out of that is gonna experience some difficulties for sure. Okay. Anybody else before we turn it over to Mr. uh Haverty and I I suspect Mr. Thornton to talk through uh the teams uh development team's response to the T A C memo?
Um quick thing, Mr. Chair, Mickey. Um
Yep.
Uh the just to back up on um on chips, too large, unsafe, those are the biggies. Um and then lack of parking um would like more because they are gonna queue up on the street and make a mess. Um and then we go back to some of the things we talked about before, which with this group, there's no open space at all. And we, I mean, there's a splotch here and there, I think. Um but um i- it's just I think that the fact that there's no open space fits in the fact that it does not fit in the neighborhood. There's and also there's livability issues too. Um but safety is the biggest and there's still people online here that have comments about this, but they they're gonna wanna see a smaller building with more open space as well. But safety is the big one and um those others are certainly incredibly important considerations for them. That's all.
Joe Casumi, you wanna add anything?
No, I
No.
All right. Mr. Haverty, I know you you your team submitted a memo. Um I'm sure Mr. Thornton um might wanna respond to what some of the things he's heard.
Yes, Chair. Uh Scott, if you could respond, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Uh so we did provide a response memo um on August eighth and uh we addressed the concerns of the T A C's memo from June twenty-sixth. Uh the the parking ratio has has been changed. Now it's at one-point-seven-five spaces uh per unit, which which uh more than complies with the town requirements in terms of the site distance. Uh the project meets the the site distance requirements for intersection site distance and stopping site distance. Um regarding the delivery vehicles, uh it's understood, you know, that this and and throughout this process, the project has has tried to address the concerns of the T A C and modify the project in in various various ways. So a delivery vehicle was added or delivery space, uh delivery vehicle space was added. Uh and we provided a plan from uh Williamson Sprages as a site engineer that showed the ability of that vehicle to pull into the spot and then turn around on site and and uh and change directions. Um in regards to the, you know, to the delivery vehicle question uh that that comes up, I think a lot of you know, part of the reason that the that these delivery vehicles uh do wind up parking on uh on the sidewalk or straddling the the curb is because there's there's not a place for them for some of these quick deliveries. Um i- whereas on on this site, there's an opportunity for them to pull in, get off of uh get off of the road, use a dedicated spot and and then, you know, exit as as needed. So we expect that that's, you know, that's one way that 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 delivery vehicle won't be parking on the Hut Street to to make their deliveries. Uh in terms of the snow storage, there were a couple areas that have been defined on the on the site plan. Um and uh the applicant is willing to remove the snow if parking becomes affected. Um. In terms of the fire trucks, again, uh fire department not likely to uh to to fight a fire from the site. Um the the site can accommodate uh some some emergency vehicles, uh ambulance, police cruiser. Um and there would be opportunity for for them to to turn around um on site and exit and uh and a fire truck, again, it's it's a it's an existing condition uh that happens out there for some of the other other uh events that um that the fire department has to come out to. Um in terms of the traffic operations, it it was noted by T A C that that there's minimal impact from the project. Uh in in terms of the queues, um you know, this this site driveway is five-hundred-and-forty feet from the from the main street junction. Uh that's enough for about twenty-two cars. Our our analysis shows that 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 level does get reached, but it's during uh it's it's a real maximum queue uh event. Uh on average, the the queues are about half half that far uh during the morning and the evening peak hours. Um and and just taking a step back uh related to the to the trip generation. In the morning, we're looking at nine nine trips. So I think it's it's two vehicles uh entering and seven vehicles exiting over the course of an hour. Um that's a that's a really minimal level of of trip generation. Um it's a similar amount during the evening peak hours, nine trips with six entering and three exiting. So you know, and and we, the applicant is still willing to to add the do-not-block markings that uh that the town engineer had suggested where we put the do-not-block text message uh or a uh possibly hatch out the area on the Hut Street in front of the in front of the site driveway to um to discourage uh cars from blocking that uh that uh that driveway. Um in terms of the of the questions about the speed data, you know, the the speed the a- and I and I understand the lieutenant's concern about the about the speeds that have that were presented and that were observed, but um you know, the speed data was collected east of Middlesex Street, which is quite a ways away from from this area and from the junction and not likely to have been affected by um by the queues that occur at that junction intersection. Um but at at and at the same time, we we meet the um we meet the site distance requirements. So uh with this driveway for the speeds that were observed uh and actually well exceed them. So it's it's really um it's really less of an issue. Um. I think I think that's about it for me, Mr. Chair, Attorney Haverty. Thank you.
Yeah, we also have um Chris Barages from Williams and Sprages here to go over any of the the site issues that you wanna talk about. But I did want to bring up the fact that I I have had conversations with my client. Um and he is willing to consider a further change to the design of the building to eliminate two units and get rid of the bump out that the board has mentioned on multiple occasions was an issue of concern for them. Um we understand we have not yet submitted a plan depicting this and that you will need additional time for that, you know, in order to review that. Um so we are happy, I believe, that the hundred-and-eighty-day period um is scheduled to expire on September eleventh. We're happy to give a thirty-day extension to October eleventh or twelfth or whatever. Um you know, whatever that would be. Give the board um plenty of time to review once we submit um a a plan depicting that. And I will have a discussion um with our project engineer to look at because reducing by two units will free up additional parking spaces. I'm gonna have him take a look at whether or not he can designate a second um delivery spot so that we can address some of those concerns as well. Um so Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add or anything you um intended to cover tonight.
Um, Mr. Chair, it's up to you. I know it's very late. I can uh I can give you a quick um a quick overview of the comments and that um most of them are things that could be handled with conditions of approval. Um I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Chair.
Let's have it out. It's but try to be efficient.
Okay, thank you. Um so um in the D B W letter uh uh from uh Bill Renault's office, uh there are there were four categories, just some general comments about civil site um and then comments about the water. Water connections, sewer connections, and then the drainage system. So the general comments um were uh there were three comments where uh the D B W asked that um some things should be included as conditions of approval. No snow storage into public ways to acknowledge that there won't be any trash pickup by the town. Uh and to acknowledge that uh right-of-way slash utility permits will be required uh during construction for any work within the right-of-way. So that's pretty straightforward. Uh the water comments, um the D B W asked us to uh prepare uh water demand calculations for the twenty-four units uh just to come up with the with a number of of gallons per day and to and to make a statement that um that the town's distribution system can handle the additional units. That's not a problem. Uh they wanted a note added to the plan that the existing water services, the small um small water services, that they should be cut and capped at the main in the street, and that's a simple note to be added to the plan. Mister um uh the D B W also wanted us to make a statement that um a second water meter or water service for the purposes of irrigation would not be allowed. Uh again, that's a that's a note um and a condition that can be added, not a problem. Uh and then that um that he wanted us to have a discussion uh with him regarding um making a contribution for water main improvements. Um we haven't spoken to uh Mr. Renault about that. Um so that's that's a that's an open item. Uh the the next category was with regard to sewer comments. Um they gave us a calculation of the expectation for the infiltration, inflow fee that's required for every project when you're connecting to the sewer, not a problem there. We expect those numbers to go down uh with a slight reduction in number of units. Um the existing um services for the for the two homes uh were not shown on our plan, and that's because early on in the project, when we collect their information, we go to the D P W and ask them to give us all of the data that they have for water and sewer services. And this water, this sewer main is very old. It's a twenty-four-inch, it's a very large uh main with a lot of capacity. And those old plans sometimes don't show the services. They just refer to chimneys at the main. Um well, I'll double-check with D B W just to make sure that we didn't miss anything. Um but um but the point of that comment was that the expectation again is to cut and cap any existing services at the main sewer pipe, which is not which is not a problem. We can we can add that note to the plan. Um but the final comments uh were with regard to drainage. At the uh at the time of D B W um submitted their initial uh comments, um they uh for some reason, they didn't have the copy of the stormwater report. Uh and so um several of the comments had to do with uh items that would normally be included in the stormwater report. Uh and so they they uh we did send another copy over to D B W back in July, uh and so they had it the second time. And uh they went through uh our stormwater report and for the board's certification, you should know that our stormwater report complies with a D E P stormwater management regulations fully. And with regard to the to the rainfall data that we used, uh the D E P still has not accepted um uh the NOAA fourteen uh data, which which uh forces people or asks people to analyze larger storm events. Uh but we voluntarily use those larger storm events uh to to try to be in line uh technically uh with the spirit of the local bylaw. Uh and our stormwater system uh clearly complies uh, you know, with those uh larger storm events and each of the st- each of the standards. Um the one comment, which I think they that D B W office um missed was the very first one uh where um the comments that were made and and the co- drainage comment number one uh stated that the test holes that we dug um real needed to be witnessed uh by um Mr. Renault and that um and that we should submit a stormwater report. Um but um they now have the stormwater report and it's clear in the stormwater report that Mr. Renault was out there with me with the and witnessed the uh the test hole uh that we dug back in October of uh twenty twenty-two. Um so um you know, that would just be, I just need to point that out to them as a reminder. Um the in the test holes that we dug, uh some of them were in paved areas and there was a little bit of fill underneath uh the pavement. Uh, the pavement, and so uh, one comment was that we should remove some of that fill material. It's somewhere between eight and twelve inches, not a big deal. Uh, but we would remove, well, I didn't know to the plan to remove any fill material. Uh, but other than that, uh, Mr. Chairman, um. Uh, the only new comment was with regard to a public right of way comment and and Mr. Renault's office would like us to re- replace. The existing sidewalk in front of our site and replace the existing curbing. That's next to that sidewalk, which is concrete curbing today. He'd like us to replace that with vertical granite. And replace the sidewalk in front of the site, uh, because uh, it's likely that it'll it'll get beat up during construction. So those are the comments um, uh, from D B W.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, Dave. Um. So uh, thanks for the updates. Um. Uh, just question, um, so. I noticed on on the site plan, um. Is there a zoning table anywhere on the site plan? Usually that's, there's a table in there. I see parking calculations. But usually there's a zoning table, dimensions showing, you know, existing, proposed, et cetera. I'm just curious.
Yes, on sheet one of ten, Mr. Hackfield. In the upper left-hand corner of the sheet.
Okay, there it is. Okay. Yeah, it was right after like the sheet de- list detail and I just didn't see it. Normally it's not on sheet one, so that's why. Probably just looked too quickly. Thank you. Um. And I noticed uh, when I was reviewing the up latest plans for for tonight, that the architectural plans that I think go back to June. If I'm not mistaken, when it was reduced from twenty-six to twenty-four units, um, the detailed sheets still showed twenty-six units if you look at each floor. So I would just ask Mr. Haverty through, I I don't know if the engineer is here, but uh, or is that Andrew maybe? Um. Just and and if we're gonna update it again, yeah, if we're gonna update it again anyway, if if you're contemplating more reductions. They're they're all gonna get updated, the parking regulations, the site plan, the architecturals, but I would just take a look at that, make sure that all the drawings are consistent. That's all.
Thank you.
Um, but again. So, Mr. Chair, I just. Appreciate, you know, that the applicant's um, desire to work with the board and continue to potentially, you know, reduce a couple of units. Uh, the question, of course, will be, is that enough, right? Is enough to mitigate those safety issues? Um, will it be enough to, you know, go back through the T A C for another review and see if that's that's enough to do it? It still doesn't necessarily address some of the outdoor amenity space and things that, again, how much we're really putting on the site. But, you know, it's 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 a show of like working with the board to try to try to get there. I just don't know at this point if it'll be enough until we we hear more and perhaps, you know, get more input from the other boards and our peer reviews, right?
But why don't we park our discussion of that, Dave, until uh. How much more are you gonna present, Mr. Haverty? Is that the entirety of your presentation?
Uh, unless uh, either Peter or Andrew had anything to present, I believe that's all we have for tonight.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have anything new. Um, I'll definitely look into the unit count. Um, I also have the graphic of the front taken off the left-hand side. That helps or if we want to wait till the next meeting to.
Yeah, I don't wanna present new material that we haven't, that wasn't submitted on Friday. That's our practice. So I wanna maintain that. Uh, discipline. So, board members, I'm thinking they're opening up to the public and then coming back and considering uh, what Mr. Haverty said. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
As ordered with that, okay. Let's do that. At this time, if there are members of the public here to comment on what was uh, presented tonight. Um, if you could use the raised hand function in Zoom. I see Karen McMaster.
Hi, Karen McMaster, twenty-five in the hunt. Um, I will thank the development team. You're much easier to listen to, understand. Um, your information's a lot clearer. I still agree that. The area that you're trying to put something is just too small. I really, really wish they just would have went with a whole bunch of townhouses like we've asked way back when. Um, it's still gonna be a problem. You can put the Xs there. We can't get out of the driveway now. We have all had to adjust our schedules from summer to. To when school opens up. You and if you put an X there, I understand you're trying to make an attempt to do something. It's not gonna stop people. From from blocking it. People are turning around in driveways because they don't wanna sit in the traffic like Lieutenant Anderson said, people get very, very frustrated. Um, i- i- it's just, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's too big. There's no sidewalk across the street from that at all. Um, which makes that road so narrow right there. It's it's gonna be very hard. Um, if I could, uh, maybe you tell people they can't take a left turn there, but are they gonna listen? People don't listen in other places. You know, I hear, you know, we propose, we hope this is gonna happen potentially. These are all words and I understand you're doing your job. But again, we live there. I wish I could present my presentation of all the pitches and the videos, but we contend with every day. Not just three-day traffic study, not just ratios and and specs, but what we're really dealing with. Again, this is a densely populated area worse than down the street. And it's it's just falls into the same category. It really does. It's just too big, even with the two-unit reduction. Um, thank you again.
Thank you. Cheryl Drews.
Hi. You know, it's interesting. I drove through Melrose, Melrose last week and I saw. Many new buildings being built. And it wasn't like these that they're trying to force on us on the hard street. Beautiful. Um, complexes that that just are not like the ones they're trying to throw throw down our throats. I I just can't imagine what it's gonna be like in the future. The heart trick can't support those big buildings and I I just, I'm appalled. And I'm sorry, but I I can't agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Power, could you provide your address to Mary Ann? You're on mute? Mary Ann, you're you're still on mute. If you could unmute and. Okay. She disappeared off my screen. If it comes back, maybe we'll break protocol and let her have her say she appears to be having a technical issue. Anybody else? The public comment. Going once, going twice. When the closed public comment. Back to the board. Dave, see your hand up.
Yeah, just one other comment, just um, responding to the uh, the delivery truck. Again, it's nice that they provide a space. But in reality, who's gonna be out there policing it saying, turn into the driveway? I think realistically, what these drivers there have to do a ton of deliveries. I- if there's a front door, they're probably gonna pull in the curb, go in the front door and find the mailroom, right? Realistically, unless someone's out there telling them to go in the parking lot, I don't know that they all will if they'll get the memo. I don't know how that would work in in reality, right? So it's great that they're providing a space, maybe the various delivery services and deliveries, um, trucks and and. And so forth would use it or figure it out over time, but I I just, I highly doubt it. So I just, as a practical matter, I still think they're gonna park on the street. So just my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So now moving on then, unless someone else has a comment on what was presented tonight, board members. Moving on to their offer to extend and to look at uh, reducing the scale, density units of the project. How are people feeling about that?
Yeah, I'm all for that.
I'm for it. I'd like to see what what it looks like. Hopefully we can get maybe a little green space, some outdoor amenities. I don't know. I still think twenty-two is gonna be too many units, but. Maybe they can make it work.
Again, it's all about mitigating this the safety concerns. They they've responded to the T A C, but again, it's. Is it gonna be enough? As I said in my previous comment, Mr. Chair, it's gonna be enough. I think we just have to see it. Um, so if they're willing to take another look at it, maybe it's two, maybe they come back and it's more, but. And it's it's still something that's viable for them and addresses the, you know, the public safety concerns. Um. That have been raised um, throughout the hearing and especially tonight with T A C. I'm I'm willing to entertain it as long as they're continuing to work with us to try to make this fit on the site in some way.
All right. Nikki or Kasumi, you you wanna weigh in here?
Um, you know, public safety, um, above all, and then um. I don't think two is gonna do it for me. I don't, I I'm sorry, Mr. Sprage. I I don't think it's close for me. I understand there is a um. There is a profit motive, um, and those are things that you have to look at, especially with affordable housing. Um. But. Two's not. How much less density we need on this site? So don't, I, my hope is that you don't come back, move that left side off and say, we got rid of two units. What do you think? I hope there's a little more than that, cuz I'd like to see some green space.
Okay. So we were in the same spot. If if I'm I'm hearing folks are at least comfortable with continuing to try to work with this team. To come to some resolution. Current. You know, we can't support the current, you know, project cuz of the safety issues that's been mentioned, so. So. I guess the general sentiment is that we're willing to do that, Mr. Haverty, but we need the same thing. I don't know if you heard the end of the last hearing. That we're gonna need a verbal commitment from you tonight so we can make a motion to. Extend. And with the understanding that you'll have a letter into uh. Town hall to Gail Conroy. Uh, and and to myself by tomorrow morning. And again, town hall closes at noon. So we we would want the letter of extension to, what was the date that you provided?
Sure. I will have that. With uh, to you.
Before ten past eleven tonight.
Okay.
I've already drafted it. It's already ready to go.
Till October tenth?
October eleventh.
October eleventh.
Yep.
Okay. So Dave, I think we're looking for the same type of motion that you made at the last hearing that we continue to September eleventh. With the understanding and commitment from this development team that they're extending to October eleventh to be confirmed by a letter. Um, to follow.
Agreed, Mr. Chair. I could say so moved, but yes, I will have a move that we uh, continue this matter to our September eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting. And accept the applicant's um, request to extend the public hearing to October eleventh, twenty twenty-four with the uh. Understanding that we will get a letter um, to to confirm that commitment um, as soon as possible.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made in second. And any further discussion? Okay, hearing seeing non-regular voting members. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you for your time tonight. We look forward to the letter and look forward to what you come up with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have sent the letter already, so you should be getting it in your inbox any minute.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, uh, with that, we're ready to adjourn. Just another thanks to Lieutenant Anderson and Matt Keely for hanging in with us. This is. Unfortunately, this is how we roll. It's eleven o'clock.
I'm used to it. One of my projects.
Yeah, the only difference is Lieutenant Anderson was working tonight, so this hasn't been a bad thing for him. He's had something to do.
You could look at it that way or uh.
As exciting as this might have been.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, uh, a motion to adjourn is always in order. We can do it by vote.
What are we, uh, we're next Wednesday, right?
Next Wednesday, we're right back at it.
With other cases.
Yeah.
These might be quick if there's not new information, right? But. But we have other ones, yes, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, did you, did you look at your inbox? Does he actually send that?
Probably.
I got it.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Gary.
All right, motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.